I would like to call to get to order the meeting of the Oregon City Commission, and today is Wednesday, October the 7th. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor. Daphne West, Commission President.
James Nacita, City Commissioner.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have generally come to the end of Oregon's 150th birthday, but our commitment in Oregon City was that we would have a sesquicentennial moment giving you a glimpse of rare and interesting facts about our city throughout the entire year. So, this evening's interesting fact will come from Commissioner Rocky Smith.
We have talked a lot recently about the bridge between the two cities. It's interesting because in 1921, 1922, an arch bridge was built between arch rivals. I want to read a little bit about rivals from the Oregon City High School Haspearian from 1921, 1922.
Yearbook.
Yearbook. "Our school. When our rivals try to beat us, try to stamp on and defeat us, stand firm and steady for the glory of our school. Our courage we will show them. When we're through, they'll see we know them. We'll show them how we're fighting for our school." There's been a long tradition since 1921, '22, when that first football game between Oregon City and West Lynn took place. November 4th, Oregon City and West Lynn play a game of football to see who would take home the bacon. And much to our grief, the Westsiders took it home by the tune of 13 to 7. Up to this game, West Lynn had not been scored on, although we were much lighter, they worked and worked hard for their 13 points. With 10 lettermen in school next fall to start off the season and a wealth of new material, the football squad intends to wallop West Lynn. And on the second year, we beat them 14 to 6. There's been a lot of memorable moments throughout that history. One was a game in 1930, 1931. The football team had the most successful season in the history of the school, winning all games by large scores. The 91 to 0 defeat of West Lynn
Woo-hoo!
and the 59-0 victory over McMinnville on Thanksgiving Day were the highlights of the season. We will be talking a little bit more about this, but I wanted to finish with another little quote from the 1921, '22 yearbook. "One of the city's proudest sights, in a spot sublime and bright, standing through long days and nights overlooking all that's right, stands our school. Looking off at the distant mills surrounded by majestic hills, far above the river's roar, among the clouds that soar, stands our school. In that school of highest fame, everyone receives the same. Proud of those who claim her name, honoring those who play this game, stands our school."
Thank you. And then, because we are playing West Lynn on Friday, I-
Thursday, tomorrow.
Excuse me, tomorrow night, one thing mayors do is issue proclamations, so I have this one for today. "Whereas the cities of Oregon City and West Lynn wish to recognize the efforts of their citizens to create and maintain a positive family environment where children can learn the value of constructive competition; and whereas the cities of Oregon City and West Lynn value tradition and history as essential parts of their community; and whereas Oregon City High School and West Lynn High School, formerly known as Union High School, have completed valiantly in the sport of football continuously since 1921; and whereas on October 8th, 2009, the teams representing these schools will renew their annual rivalry for the 89th time; and whereas this is the longest continuously played rivalry west of the Mississippi and therefore worthy of recognition; and whereas the City Commission of Oregon City desires that the Pioneers again defeat the Lions," which hasn't happened in my term, but I don't think it's my fault, "and the city of West Lynn desires that the Lions again defeat the Pioneers. Now, therefore, we, the City Commission of Oregon City and the City Council of West Lynn, will be signing this as well, hereby recognize and commend all citizens who have participated in this annual Gridiron Classic and support the efforts of the current teams by proclaiming October 8th, 2009, tomorrow, to be Oregon City-West Lynn Rivalry Day. We further recommend in the spirit of the day that all citizens wear clothing of the appropriate colors, and that would be red and white, and refrain from crossing the bridge unless business requires until game time. So done." Now, we have another proclamation also for something important. "Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, committees, and states across the country, as well as by the White House and Congress for more than two decades; and whereas October 8th tomorrow marks the anniversary of Oregon's unique cultural tax credit; and whereas heritage, arts, and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind; and whereas humanities, heritage, and the arts enhance and enrich the lives of every American; and whereas arts, humanities, and heritage play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country; and whereas the nonprofit cultural industry also strengthens the U.S. economy by generating more than $166.2 billion in total economic activity annually and by supporting the full-time equivalent of over 5.7 million jobs; and whereas events celebrating all these positive attributes will take place in Oregon from October 1st through October 8th, 2009. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Alice Norris, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 8th, as Oregon Day of Culture in Oregon City and call upon our citizens to celebrate, participate in, and give to Oregon culture in our community and to take action to support heritage, arts, and humanities in our towns and cities." Don't forget that cultural tax credit. It's a credit against your taxes for the gifts that you give to any arts, heritage, or humanities organization throughout the year. It's a wonderful support. Now, we have the introduction of our newest Neighborhood Association co-chairs. Who's going to do that? William, would that be you? All three of you, great. Come forward, please.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is William Gifford, and in behalf of the Citizens Advisory Council, or Citizen Involvement Council, of which I am secretary, it's my great pleasure to introduce the newest co-chairs of Neighborhood Association, the co-chairs of the Caulfield Neighborhood Association, or I think they're calling themselves Caulfield Association of Neighbors for the acronym C-A-N.
C-A-N.
Make sure you get that right.
Can, can-do.
Yes, can-do. I'd like to introduce Jean Dingwall and Larry Hanlon.
Great, welcome. Welcome.
We'll try hard.
Great. That's, it's important work that you do, and it's also, you'll find, difficult sometimes, representing your neighbors.
Yeah. We'll find that out, I think, more and more as we go. We're still in the voting process.
Yes, great. You're still riding on the euphoria of election.
We still can't figure out how it happened.
Kind of happened by default.
That's right.
Yep.
You said yes, and yes is a good thing to say.
No, we actually sneezed and they-
Oh, boy. Well, thank you very much. We'll see you again. We have two new Neighborhood Associations, I believe, in the last couple of months, so good work, CIC. Next, we have Citizen Comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak on topics that are not on the agenda for up to three minutes, so we ask that you come to the microphone, and if you've written clearly, all you'll have to do is give your, the city in which you reside, and then you may speak to us. So, Kate Clinton and Paul Edgar, why don't you come up together in the interest of time?
Good evening, Mayor Norris, and members of the Commission. My name is Kate Clinton, I live in Portland, Oregon. And I'm here tonight representing the United Way of the Columbia Alamo. United Way, many of you know, advocates for the common good, and what we mean by that is that when you help one or two or three people in the community, it has a ripple effect, and it often helps us all. United Way concentrates on three focus areas: income, education, and health. And we strategize with volunteers in the community to discover effective methods of dealing with very complex, long-range problems. And obviously, Clackamas County is one of the counties that we serve. Last year during the cycle, we helped 10 agencies in this county with an additional five agencies that were collaborating partners. And last year, because of the very unfortunate economic situation in our area, we established a community relief fund that assists many, many families with rental assistance, utility assistance, and food, and we work with the Oregon Food Bank. And I just want to mention something that I don't think a lot of people realize, and that is, 100% of your United Way donation goes to those programs in those four county areas. And we can say that because we have a group of community partners that are businesses, major businesses in the area that step up to the plate to pay our overheads so that your donations can go where they're most needed. So, I just want to thank you so much for your past support, your leadership, and your generosity, and urge you to give again. And I also have, our theme this year is Living United, and I have T-shirts for each one of you, so I hope you'll wear it and encourage others to give. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can find a monster's body, I just saw it.
Okay. Anyone for a large?
An extra large.
Is there a medium? Thank you.
Oh, you did that perfect.
Great, thank you very much. Kate?
Madam Mayor, City Commission. As you know, I've written on the wastewater treatment agreement. I've attended the Sewer 101 Conference at, with Tri-Cities, and some new information now seems to be coming to us and has been consolidated, which makes, leads me to ask if there's an ability for you to reconsider through a new vote your position on okaying the wastewater agreement package. And why I ask for your reconsideration and why I think it's relevant is because of the following important issues. One is that recently, at one of the meetings, Larry committed to paying after other people saying, talking about it, that it's like a commitment, because now that we're into this, that we pay a quarter of the study associated with whether or not we should decommission Milwaukee. Now, this could be, the study is over $300,000, and there are other funds that might come into the play, but in reality, no one knows exactly how much it's going to cost, but it's really the commitment that you guys all have and are entering into that says that we are jointly liable for everything. We're part of that marriage, that partnership, to a completely different system. Now, with that comes along a report that comes down that shows the wastewater treatment rates, and I have that in front of me, and it shows that the CCSD treatment rates in 2008 are going to be 26, or 2009, 29, 50, ours at 11, 65. Theirs goes up by 2013 to 36, 90, ours is at 13, 70, and then we're looking at a period or a time when we so-called reach parity. But at that moment, they're at 36, and parity is then being calculated at $29.60 for everyone. This means that we, in effect, are being obligating all ratepayers in Oregon City to come up with about $6 to fund Tri-CCSDs under money that they don't have. And when we get to the whole thing, what it really means, that we are sitting there on the cusp of raising our rates without need by $15, $18. Now, when we calculate what that really means to every one of the ratepayers, I'm a senior citizen-
Paul, can you summarize, please?
That we are going to be taxed and fee right out of our house, and it's needless because right now there's 12 years of excess capacity in Tri-Cities with the latest calculations of growth. So, we have no need whatsoever to be put into a situation where our rates are needlessly raised.
Thank you. Would you like to make a little response to that because-
I will.
Some corrections in there.
And I must say, once again, Mr. Edgar, I don't know where he gets his facts at, and I'm-
I'm currently the head of the Budget Committee, sir. Of the, of-
Okay.
Is, and Mr. Edgar, I believe, was at the meeting that this came up. There was an issue about the study, as you know, we're looking at the Kellogg Study, how that is to be funded. There was quite a discussion about that. In fact, I remember raising the initial concern, but had very little discussion in regards coming from me on that particular issue. After quite a bit of debate, Mike Kinsey, who is the Executive Director at West, did present the budget. There's money budgeted both in the Tri-City budget that it will, that was looking at, basically, at some of the loading there at the plant. There's going to be part of this study because it's one of those issues we're going to have to deal with. There's money also in CCSD budget, as well as they budget some other things. Again, that is still being scoped, so if it goes beyond that, that's a discussion that had to be talked about. There was no commitment for the City of Oregon City to spend a quarter, I think the email I saw said 75,000, where that came from and how that's associated to me is totally a fabrication of the facts. And once again, Mr. Edgar is wrong on his facts as he comes to meeting after meeting making those type presentations, and frankly, it just does not bear itself out.
That's it.
I have, I have the podium now.
When you made statements like that about-
Paul, Paul, excuse me.
You need to be held accountable. That's impossible.
Paul, excuse me. You heard what you heard, but our city manager was-
Anyhow, that, the fact that the Oregon City budget is committed that is erroneous, there is money that is budgeted both in Tri-City's CCSD that is going to be used for that study, as well as CCSD is budgeted some additional amounts. If the study costs more than that, that decision will have to be figured out how that's done, and that has not been done at this point.
Okay, may I ask, the possible use of money that, that's at Tri-City, is held in the Tri-City budget, I thought was to go to only a portion that benefits Tri-City customers, which would be for the additional bio solids?
That is correct.
So, it really wouldn't go to the Kellogg study? That redundancy-
It deals with the same issue that that may deal with. Again, I don't have that sitting right in front of me, it's very technical in terms of the discussion. I'll be glad to come back. In fact, I could go pull it off the computer now, because I got that from Mr. Kinsey the other day when this question came up.
Well, it'd probably be good to talk about that another time.
Just another question.
Commissioner Neely.
You wouldn't be legally authorized to commit the city to anything in terms of any financial obligation.
Only we can do that.
That's true. Now, again, what you have in place from the Partners Group, which is being formed, is strictly advisory to the County Commission. We could, we could make a recommendation, we don't want to be part of that. County Commission could decide they're going to divert those monies. It is their call. They are the governing body which will make those decisions. Again, from the committee, based on the discussion that Mike Kinsey had in terms of what the budgets were, is the committee accepted that recommendation.
The committee being the-
Wastewater Advisory-
Which has the city managers of the three.
Nope, no. This is, this is-
The partnership.
The partnership that we've talked about, and again, it's not even formed in any official capacity at this point, because that still has, other partners have to-
If it hasn't been formed, can it accept the recommendation?
Yes, yeah. I mean, there's no magic about it, because again, it's just an advisory.
It's advisory.
Is the Tri-City budget up on a website somewhere?
It should be on the Tri-City.
They have a budget, I don't know if they have that online or not.
Yeah, I don't know. You can certainly get it easily.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We probably should follow up on that another time. Okay, continuing on, for Citizen Comment, Philip Gentlemen and Reverend Sean Floyd. Please come up together.
After you. I'm Phil Gentlemen, resided 2137 Merlewood Court, West Lynn.
Just the town in which you reside.
Okay, West Lynn. I hate to say West Lynn. No.
The answer's no.
You only have six hours to get back across the bridge.
And he lives right across the earth. To save some time, I gave you a handout, and I'll try and speed through this, it might take three or four minutes, but I'll try and keep it under three. Really, I'm not here to complain, I'm actually here to ask for your help. We own 9.5 acres on Beaver Creek Road, Myers, across from the high school. And our, our property was included in the original urban growth boundary when it was established, back in 1979. And I, you've got a copy of the email from Ray Van Loon from Metro confirming that, and then I put a copy of the original, I don't know how to call it, the order, I guess, establishing the urban growth boundary. And our property was inside the urban growth boundary in '79. It was designated outer neighborhood residential. It was not part of the 2002 or 2004 boundary change, so we're not subject, our property is not subject to the Title 11 or subject to the Metro requirement for a conceptual plan. We purchased the property in December of '05, and then about that time, we were starting to talk about doing the Beaver Creek Conceptual Plan, which sounded like a good idea. So, I volunteered and was on the task force, along with two other property owners, for about a year. We were then annexed into the property, into the city on November 6th of '07. And, but just due to the length of time that it's taken since we bought the property, we're up for renewal on our loan. And so, we've gone out, the appraiser has gone out to do the appraisal. We've got annexation, but I don't have any zoning. You know, and talking to staff, you know, there's no real schedule, it could take one to five years. And so, of course, the result of the appraisal is, he's downgraded the appraisal. So, this is why I'm here today. This is, it's kind of an urgent problem with us, and we don't want to risk losing the property. What I'd like to do in summary is, I don't think we need to be part of the Beaver Creek Conceptual Plan. But we, it was included kind of as a matter of convenience, and also because at the time we bought property, we would not be able to submit an application. What I'd like to do is have you remove it from the conceptual plan and then give us some zoning that we can, and we've worked with the city staff on, that would be compatible with what you wanted to do in the conceptual plan. And that could be done separate from the Beaver Creek Conceptual Plan. It was, it still is designated neighborhood, outer neighborhood commercial on the 2040 plan. The copy you've got there, the light yellow didn't show up real well, and I did bring a copy I can give to Dan. And I believe also we talked to Metro, and that Metro is willing to submit a letter supporting the action of taking it out of the Beaver Creek Conceptual Plan. So, what I'd like to ask you to do, and I'll finish up, is that you maybe direct staff to work with us to come up with a zoning for our property so that we can kind of proceed with getting the loan closed and then eventually developing a property. And I'm amenable to developing with a zone that would fit with what you, what we intended along with the conceptual plan. In the conceptual plan, we actually had 15% of the MUE property that could be committed to residential as part of the plan.
Okay. Your time's up, can you-
Any questions?
Finished? I think we probably will have a lot of questions about this, so it will probably require a little bit more, more time on that. So, can we refer that to staff for you to talk, and then we will have to, I think, revisit it at a time when we can ask those questions.
I understand that.
This is just a presentation of time, so.
Okay.
So, thank you very much. Do we have, staff, you have all you need?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Norris and Commissioners, I'm Reverend Sean Floyd of Oregon City, representing Multnomah Lodge. Speaking of Kellogg's and Caulfield's, when they formed our lodge in 1846, we're a philanthropic organization, nonprofit. During that time, most of our brothers have donated to Oregon City, such as John Holcomb, donated for the land for the Housing Authority, Forbes Barkley, 30 acres for the cemetery, Gerald Warner, and many other masons, Amos Lovejoy, to help build this city. Brother Meldrum gave all of his land to Gladstone for Meldrum Park. I'm coming to you humbly to, our 103-year-old boiler has crashed. We are trying to raise up the money through various fundraisers. We give most of our money to cancer and diabetes research. There is, I know there's a grant for $10,000, and it's only for the outside-of-the-businesses improvement, but this is an inside thing. There's a plaque right next to our lodge that talks about the boiler and the OK Barber Shop of 1907. And so, we've always loved giving to the city, and we've never asked for anything, and we're, we're in need of some help, if there's any possibilities of that. We have our second floor of lawyers, and the toy store is now, and the hobby store is now on the first floor. And any monies that we get from those are to help keep that 103-year-old building intact. So, on behalf of Multnomah Lodge, I would like to humbly ask, and Forbes Barkley gave us that land in his will, and I have the honor of representing, representing Dr. Barkley at the McLaughlin House. I have the original plats for the Mountain View Cemetery, and I would like to get together with Mr. Patterson and give him copies of the original plats of the cemetery hand drawn by those original founders of Oregon City. And I thank you for your time.
May I ask what the cost is you're talking about?
$70,000 is what it's going to cost. We have approximately $45,000 put away that we can use, and the rest, we're just going to have a pancake fundraiser the day before Halloween in the morning. We're going to invite all of Oregon City there if they want to give a donation. We're going to do some, also, I'm going to try and set up some paper boxes, usually brings in about $300 a month, and do whatever we can to get that building heated again. It's a pretty nasty job, there's a lot of asbestos down there. The boiler is directly where Dr. Barkley had the city morgue, because at that time, he was the mayor, commissioner, superintendent, and coroner. And so, I have a lot of his artifacts and books that survived the fire of 1845, or 1846, there was two fires. And I spoke with Kathy Griffin, and she said there was really nothing she could do because it was urban renewal.
Okay. Okay, we'll have to refer this also, and see if we can find a pot of money.
You might want to consider it under metro enhancement.
Yeah, we have two...
We're having a heck of a time. No banks really want to finance this, because it's not resident.
Yeah, we'll, talk with staff about, or you can actually look online for the metro enhancement grant, and that might be a possibility.
Yeah, we've been turned down by quite a few people, so I'm just, that's all I've...
Well, thank you, thank you for coming before.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all the cards I have this evening, is that, is there anyone who I missed? Okay, we will move on then to our business agenda. First, let's look at the agenda, is there any item that needs to be moved forward, or order changed, or items off the consent agenda? Seeing none?
Actually...
Yes, Commissioner Nocita?
Is making a correction to minutes, taking something off the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Nope.
Yes, it is.
Then I need to...
Which one? Okay, anything else? All right, with that exception, we will take the agenda in the order in which it appears in our book, beginning with a public hearing. And this is ordinance number 91006 for a street vacation, the east street intersection of Fisher Avenue. And for the staff report on this, Bob Colson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. This is the second piece of street vacation. Before you, last month, you had the resolution to initiate the vacation. We've then advertised it in the paper, as required, and now we bring before you the ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance. Again, we're recommending approval of vacating three and a half feet of unbuilt Fisher Avenue that the June Berry Clackamas Community Land Trust will be building out, and they needed the extra three and a half feet to get an extra two lots in, and we only need the required width as it is, it was a 60 footer that we didn't need all of it, so recommend that you approve that, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions before I open the public hearing?
The only one is what's stated on the green sheet, we would not do a second reading tonight.
That's correct, that was an error.
Okay, then, here, oh, yes.
And I do, Mr. Kabizman has a detail to...
Okay.
Yeah, one minor detail, just want to clarify one of the clauses, when you look at the ordinance, you've got a now therefore, by Oregon City ordains as follows, and what's in there, it could be clarified, and I was just going to suggest some alternative language that says now therefore, Oregon City ordains as follows, for the reasons described above, the section of Fisher Avenue described above is hereby vacated, to make it just read better and a little clearer about what's happening. So, and we can do that when we have the first reading.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now the commission may deliberate. Is there anyone that has either questions or a motion?
I'll move for first, student in support of this 091006 for to vacate an eastern section of Fisher Avenue.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner Nocita. Yeah, assuming made amended language. Mr. Kabizman, for the first reading.
Ordinance number 09-1006, an ordinance vacating a section of Fisher Avenue of the Nob Hill subdivision, plat number 239, Clackamas County, City of Oregon City, Oregon, with the following amendment, now therefore, Oregon City ordains as follows, for the reasons described above, the section of Fisher Avenue described above is hereby vacated.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
I do want to bring this up in discussion, but our attorney is reading extremely vogue, giving his slowly, given to his normal speed of reading.
We need to give him...
I hope you're in good health.
I'm doing okay, you know, recover from the lack of food, I'm feeling a little famished.
No, I think what we need is to give him a longer piece to read, that's what he needs. Okay, for those of you that don't know, we have a speed reader among us. And now moving into the general business, we have the first item, which is the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Oregon City Employees Local 350-2, Council 75 ASME, for the period of two years, July 1, 2009, to June 30, 2011. And here to make the presentation is Jim Ufler, our Human Resources Director. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. I presented for you this evening the bargaining agreement that we reached tentative agreement on September 4th, and as you can see from the staff report, it's a very fair and equitable agreement that was reached with our ASME members to, for the next two years. It includes compensation levels 3% for this year and 2% for next, and also a myriad of other compensation improvements over previous bargaining agreements. Subject to any questions, that concludes my brief.
And this has been approved by our employees?
Oh, that's correct, it was ratified by the ASME members, and now the steps is commission, ratification, and then implementation.
And it actually will be retro effective as of July 1.
Salary is retroactive to July 1st, that was the only retroactivity in the contract.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Neely?
Just clarification on section 6.4, callback, could you go ahead and explain quarterly what callback is?
Callback?
As opposed to regular, a regular overtime situation?
Okay, callback is, in fact, when an employee has gone home, and or has left the premises for the day, and is required to come back and perform work, to physically report to duty to perform work, so that's...
Not arranged ahead of time, essentially?
No, this is, this is specifically, mostly deals with the public works employees who are home and need to come back to fix a water issue or sewer issue.
Snow removal.
That's, that's a possibility too, although that's also addressed via an emergency shift change.
Oh, boy.
Other questions?
So if, well, yeah, it's just related, if, in fact, the need was established during the normal working hours, would that be regular overtime, or would that also be a callback?
If they have, if they leave work and come back, it's callback, that's the thing, yeah. And there is a callback list, a volunteer list that's established each year, that Public Works uses to bring folks back in when needed.
Okay, further comment? Yes, please, Commissioner West.
I move approval for the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Oregon City and the Oregon City Employees Local 350-2, Council 75 ASME for the period of July, or going back to July 1, 2009, through June 30, 2011.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nocita?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I do have, after we voted, I did want to make a couple of comments on this. I have a lot of comments, I don't know that I want to make them all, I do want to share some reflections, one, I'll just share one. This process was, for me, a rather bumpy one.
It's your first time, right?
It is, and, and I don't think that was why it was bumpy, though, quite frankly. And I have learned some lessons and gained some insights, and I've talked to a lot of people about this process, and I think, I want to, I think, challenge some conventional wisdom I received in this process, that it was either illegal or unwise for an elected official to speak directly with a union during the collective bargaining agreement. I did a lot of research on this question, and that was the case years ago. There was actually a specific statutory provision that prevented an elected official from talking to union members. That was explicitly repealed in the 1990s, and is no longer part of the statute. An elected official is completely free to either be part of the collective bargaining team, or to share his or her thoughts with the union. In fact, one of the ideas that I think I will carry forward into the next bargaining session is that it may be a good idea, and I will probably keep this in mind and raise this, that at least one or two members of the city commission be part of the bargaining team. If you have a bargaining team of five members, I don't see that there's anything but good that can come of having one or two, a non-quorum of the city commission as part of the bargaining team, for two reasons. One, to make sure that the commissioners know the details of what's going on, and to make sure that what occurs in executive session is consistent with what is going on in the bargaining sessions. So that's, that's my, I think, insight and wisdom from the process that we engaged in over the summer, and I think I'll leave it at that.
If I could just, the article that I gave all of you from the League of Oregon Cities magazine specifically addresses your second point of sitting on the bargaining team, so I would just, just refer you back to that, because I thought it was a thoughtfully done article. Okay, let's move on then to the amendment to the construction excise tax collection IGA between Metro and the City of Oregon City. This is new, as you know, I've said on the committee, was working on the new rules for that, and Oregon City has benefited from this construction excise tax, we're actually a net recipient in that we, Oregon City received more to do our concept plans, we're a net beneficiary, than we paid out, actually, into the general pot. So for us, it's been extremely positive. So, Mr. Van Loon, are you the staff person on this one? Thank you.
Yeah, and again, this is, originally in 2006, the CET, or construction excise tax, was put into place with an inter-local government between Oregon City and Metro, and we collect those funds as part of building permit, as part of building permits, we collect those funds. So that program has expired, and this would, if you approve it, allow the city manager to sign the IGA with Metro to extend it until 2014. And then there are some changes, I think some good changes, the money that is collected as part of this tax can be used for more than concept plans, it can be used for basically any planning effort within a UGB of a municipality. And there's also a little more meat in the agreement in terms of what cities have to do to apply for the grant. There's also this establishment of a committee to review the grant proposals, which the committee recommends to the CEO of Metro, and then the Metro Council makes the final decision. And then there's also some evaluation criteria for the planning projects, and I think the biggest change is that there's an emphasis on projects that, that we can demonstrate, or a city can demonstrate will actually happen, actually seeing things being built, or improvements being made. So that's, that's one of several criteria that they have in a grant that I think is probably a good thing.
Commissioner Neely?
Although we collect the money, we actually are not the final determiner on how it's utilized, right?
Right, that's correct.
The other question I have here is, where we've seen it used, of course, is in comprehensive plans, and probably the reason we're a net beneficiary...
Concept plans.
Huh?
Concept plans.
A concept plans, excuse me. That we're a net beneficiary is because we're a fringe city, and that's where expansion occurs. My question is, can the county government request these kinds of funds as well?
Yes.
Okay. Can they do it in the form of concept plans in areas that are urbanized?
I would think so, I mean, like I said, if they met their criteria, the evaluation criteria, but I don't think there's any prohibition for that type of thing.
I think that'd be difficult, meet the criteria.
Yeah.
I was going to say, there should be, if there's no...
I think we just need to get on the committee.
And if I could remind you too, that concept planning now needs to be done prior to bringing land into the UGB, so it's...
But who pays the county then, or the city?
Well, it depends who's initiating it.
Yeah.
So it would be us, if we initiated it, it'd be us again.
Yes, Commissioner West?
Well, mine back to the basics on this, and that is, so everyone who builds, builds a new home, new business, new structure, manufactured home, I thought I read in here, remodel pays, the builder pays the fee, the property owner.
Right, there's, there's a cutoff, and I think it's $100,000, but I'd have to double check, yeah.
So if I remodel my bathroom, take out permits, and add $20,000 to the value of my home, I, it goes towards this?
No, you'd have to be over $100,000.
Oh, it's over $100, oh, okay. And did it look like this time around, this might be a home builder's thing, that they've got it capped on how much we're going to pay? In here, that there was a cap on it by two, that they are going to collect, I should say, that they can collect?
There was a cap on the initial one, but I don't think there's one on this one, it's just based on a percentage of the building fee. So it's basically how much you collect.
The original tax imposed a $6.3 million cap on how much they can collect. That was the old one, the new one just picks a sunset date, instead of saying, once we collect the money, it's over, and now just says...
September 2014.
Yeah, because Metro is now, now, they don't really know when it'll start, so they're waiting to hit the 6.3 million, which is supposed to be in October sometime, so...
Thank you for the clarification.
So there's a chance that there wouldn't be enough money to take, to match the grants that were applied for through 2014? It just depends, again, on how much comes in for building.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner West?
I move approval for this amendment to the construction excise tax collection IGA between Metro and the City of Oregon City.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Neely. Further discussion or comments? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Next, we have a resolution that was recommended by the city council, the city commission, on urban and rural reserves, a discussion that we have been having for quite some time, and is a regional topic as well. And after a joint work session between the planning commission and the city commission, we've put out a recommendation, which is included in our packet, and then wanted to make sure that we had two opportunities for citizen comment, so this is one of those. Are you going to do a kind of a little bit of overview of these? Thank you.
Correct.
Yeah, and again, this was a very involved process. I was just counting, there are seven, right now, we have seven different groups that are involved in this decision, and that doesn't include the county policy advisory that just completed their recommendation on this process. So, again, the way the process works is, there is a group called the Core Four that represent the three counties in the metro area and Metro. This whole decision of urban rural reserves doesn't happen unless that group of four people agree. So if they don't agree, we're back to looking at the traditional 20-year urban growth boundary discussion. And this is particularly difficult, because we're in a 50-year timeframe, and to do population and employment projections in that time period is very difficult, but those, those numbers are the ones that are, the decisions are being based on, in terms of what areas should come in, potentially as urban, and what areas should be rural. So we've had two work sessions with the planning commission. At the last meeting of the Urban Reserves Steering Committee, which include various agencies and representatives from all the cities and counties, there was a discussion about all the county's recommendations. The recommendations that we talked about at the joint work session were fairly consistent with those of the county, with the exception of two areas. And, well, I'll take a look at the map that we have up. One is area six, this is the area Clackamas Heights, the north area, and the county had that suggested as urban. We thought that it should not be, particularly because it was difficult to serve for transportation. There's really no access from the north across the Clackamas River, and so... There's really no access from the north across the Clackamas River, and so we suggested that area be kept out. That was, again, in the county's recommendation for urban. The other area of difference was Area Four on the map, it's that purple area. That area was originally urban on the county maps, it dropped out for some reason. We've suggested that it stay urban, and part of the reason is, is that there's existing development to the west of that area already in the city. The ability for the city to extend transportation, water, and sewer lines is much easier than an area like Area Six to the north, and so if you recall at our last work session, we thought that should be left in. The other thing that came up at the last work session was to look at the area along 99E, the Kanema area, as a possible area for employment. Tony spent a little bit of time looking at our water resource maps, our Title 13 maps and the water and sewer lines, to see how feasible that was to possibly be considered for urban. So I think that's probably one area that we may want to discuss, because the county has that recommended as rural, and I think the importance about a rural designation is that the ability for that to ever be urbanized in 50 years is about zero. So if we have...
It's the most restrictive designation.
It's the most restrictive category. So if we have any concerns about the ability to possibly bring that in, I think that's something we should talk about. The other option, if we don't designate it urban, is undesignedated, which really means that it's not urban, but if all the urban areas within the metro area are somehow used within that 50-year time period, then Metro can consider some of those undesignedated areas. So it's on a holding pattern, but it's not impossible to eventually bring in.
Commissioner West?
Dan, yours, you didn't, I don't think you finished your sentence on Area Four, you said that we suggested, the city suggested it be urban, but what did the county put in?
Right now, the county has it as undesignedated.
Oh, undesignedated.
Yeah.
If I might, a couple...
Commissioner Neely?
Two things. On Area Four, since you mentioned it, the technical advisory committee to the county actually made a recommendation in terms of inclusion of that particular area, and so I'm pretty sure that was probably a mistake on the county's part when it came forward. And I can, at one point, I'll mention what the, and that was the technical advisory committee to the county commission, and when the time comes, if we're looking, I presume we're gonna look at these on an area-by-area basis. I think we almost have to.
Well, I think particularly where we differ from the county recommendation.
Right. And I was gonna add to that...
Sure, once you finish.
That the county is aware of our desire to have that in. It was made clear at the last steering committee when I spoke about Oregon City's position, and I've also talked to their planning director about it, so they're aware of our position, and I think are open to consider that.
I got a question here on the map that you've handed out, the area basically along the Willamette River. You have two areas indicated.
I typed in Area Seven and Eight?
Seven and Eight, yes. The suggestions that initially were coming out, and I think there was some citizen participation in this as well, but the, were coming from the county commissioners, and I felt that they were talking about Area Seven and not Area Eight.
That's what I thought, too.
Okay. Area Eight, I think, was there simply because it was part of the initial discussion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the area that you were looking at for study, Tony, was Area Seven?
Right, we weren't exactly sure which section specifically the commission was interested in, so we just took everything along 99E going south until you hit our current UGB southern property line.
Oh, that's what you looked at.
So we just, and then, as you come south on 99E, you start to get some cliffed-out areas, so we decided that'd be a good point to separate these into two distinct areas since they are. And to remind you, what you see is, everything that is in the yellow color or the purple color is what would be considered developable. Everything where you've got areas that are not colored are either in excess of 25% slope, or as you can see in the south area here, have utility line easements through them, or creek through them, so those are taken out of the developable area calculation. So what you do see on the northern, Area Seven here, you do have quite a bit of developable area just east of 99E there. This property right here is owned by Metro, this property up here is owned by Metro, that's why those aren't showing up.
That's the blocks.
Yep, so we took out every property that was owned by Metro.
And did you also take out the Willamette River Greenway and the setbacks along the river, too? I can't really tell where the edge is there.
We did not, no.
But those would be undevelopable, right? River setbacks, the Willamette Greenway?
They're developable under certain situations. We do have a code that addresses development within the Willamette River Greenway. This would be, you know, these areas that are currently, this is already inside of our urban growth boundary with development, so you're really starting to get pretty far back once you get back here. I'm not sure that they would actually fall within that Willamette River Greenway, and as you extend it south, we would have to look at that if we ever brought this in and amend our maps to reflect what we wanted that Willamette River Greenway to be for our city code.
If I could just finish up, then. So if we wanted to talk about this further, what's the point in the process that we do that? I'm going to a decision-making meeting next Wednesday.
Well, that's what we were here for today.
Okay. I know that there, well, we haven't really talked about an amendment process, and we're kind of late to come to the game, so what's your best shot at that?
Well, I mean, we can, at the last regional reserves meeting, we passed along the message that we talked about before without Kanema, and the Kanema thing came up recently. So I guess the question is, do you want to explore it further, or just stay with what we have?
Are you gonna talk about Kanema, too, Commissioner Neely? Just one more thing, then. If you could talk about what you discovered as you looked at that, in that property?
Okay.
And why you think we should consider it?
Well, what we started to look at was that you actually do have quite a bit of flat areas, you come off of 99E behind the existing developments there, and then it tends to step up in steps as it comes back. What we'd find is that, you know, one of the issues is, you're gonna be, most likely you're putting in a pump station in order to serve this area for sewer.
More than one, or just one?
Oh, you'd probably serve it with one. What you have is, in 99E, at the end of, at the end of our city line, in 99E, you find the elevation of the pavement's approximately 84 feet. You do come up to a rise as you come southbound, up to about 122 feet, so it pretty much precludes the ability to provide gravity in there. Most likely looking at some type of a pump station in there. We do have water to the north, up in, at the end of the Oregon City limits, and then up on top as well. It would provide an opportunity to provide some looping in there, and when we talk about looping, we talk about providing alternative routes, helps with water quality and whatnot. So getting the water in there isn't that much of a concern. Walkability of the area, pretty limited, trying to get up and down 99E unless there's some type of an investment similar to what you see, which isn't out of the question for some type of Willamette Trail, to get folks connected around the bluff that separates kind of the city limits right now. It gets very narrow in there, very limited ability to put a sidewalk, safe sidewalk in there, so we'd probably try to get some type of an off-street connection as you move south down there. This area does include a potential route that would connect down to 99E. It's very preliminary, based off of topo maps. We haven't gone in there, done any engineering to look at that, but you don't run into steep slope areas in excess of 35% or greater, which would preclude the ability to get a road in there. There are several logging roads that you can see from the aerials that exist right now, that go up and down that hillside and connect 99E up to the top, top of the hill.
Commissioner Neely?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. I think the major thing, if I were to support it, was the road. The question in terms of connection, we have still, within our urban growth boundary at South End, there's rather an extensive area that can be built up on. I think people that have come down during peak hour, coming down the South End Road, it's a real challenge, and it's difficult for me to see that we're going to be able to really service that area that we already have in the city if we continue expanding at the densities that we've been doing. And of course, that's a lower density, and that, for the most part, in that area. Can we build a road, if we can find the financing to do it, without us owning the property, without it being in the city and still have it an urbanized? It need not be an urbanized road in terms of it providing anything but a destination from that area, the South End area down to 99E. I'm not sure we need sidewalks necessarily.
I guess, I know we run into an issue of extending urban city services outside of our city limits. You'd probably be looking at some type of a joint cooperation with Clackamas County to update their transportation system plans, to get it on there, is something that they could spend monies on for a capital improvement. One of the issues you're gonna run into, and we have, there was discussions about timber properties, tax deferral payments for timber and farmland, and that was gonna be on the work session next Tuesday. We have prepared a memo addressing those work session issues, and so I'll go ahead and talk about, what you see on the Clackamas County zoning map is that this is all zoned timber. So I don't know if it actually receives the tax deferment, or if it qualifies, but we would need to go through the timber zoning designation specifically to look for the ability to put new roads in a timber designated, timber zoned property in the county. I'm not sure what issues you're gonna run into there. And I was gonna say, the other thing, just digressing a little bit from this conversation about the road, is that we did talk to the Clackamas County Tax Assessor concerning tax deferments on farm and forest land properties, and whether that property is inside, wherever it's located, whether it's outside the UGB, inside a UGB, or inside of a city, if they have that tax deferment for forest land, it continues regardless of if they're annexed into the city or not, and that tax deferment continues as long as that property owner maintains to meet the requirements of that tax deferment, and they don't change the use on the property. The Tax Assessor did say, one thing that's interesting, is that its local jurisdictions, both at the county level and the city level, move towards stricter tree preservation and removal requirements, banning clearcutting, or banning the ability to take out several trees on a property. One of the requirements to qualify for that tax deferral is that you are actively harvesting that property, you take out a minimum amount of wood from that property. If you put a ban on those tax-deferred properties from being able to get out the minimum required to the deferral, they lose the deferral. So, and that was another question that was brought up, about a memorandum of understanding concerning how do we preserve natural resources, wetlands, creeks, streams, and trees on properties that would potentially like to come into the UGB or into the city limits. So I don't know that we want to go there tonight. I can give you the information, and we can certainly defer it to the meeting, the work session next Tuesday, or I can give you a rundown of that memorandum if you'd like it tonight. It's a lot of information.
So what percentage of the yellow, of what is that, Area Seven, is treed and forested? Because I'm not sure, I'm interested in...
A vast majority of it.
It's a vast majority of it?
Yes.
I'm leaning towards undesignedated or leaving them alone.
I guess, you know, but just because it's, because it's treed, it's zoned timber. It is specifically for being harvested. There is no guarantee those trees will be there. It's not publicly owned, there's no Clackamas County, Clackamas County put together a...
It's brand new.
The Trees Task Force, and they specifically exempted properties that have tax deferrals on them for timber harvesting from the new tree protection code.
I want to make a distinction between the two situations. Obviously, there are areas of steep slopes and so forth where we want to build, but that doesn't mean a good portion of this area isn't urbanizable, is that right?
That's correct.
That's a very different situation than we're talking about in New Oak Creek Canyon, which cannot be urbanized. So these are really two different, I think these are two different situations.
So if you were to talk about a portion of that, is there any piece of it that's different than any other? I mean, would you slice it in half, or, I mean, talking about the whole thing, just because it was a study area, but does it make sense in its configuration?
I think that what is, is that your street connections are coming in, Forest Ridge Lane, I believe, comes in and stubs out in this area, and then you have another street that comes up in here. But this would probably be your best area, best ability to access this area, just going off the aerials that we've seen so far. So you're pretty much getting down into here, and what happens is, these were partitioned in the county at some point, and what you see here is, you've got five or six lots that all start from this corner right here, and come out like a spoke on a wheel. So, you know, if you want to take to here, you're taking all the way back to here, because that's where the property goes to.
Okay, got it. Commissioner Nocida?
Two comments and two questions. The first comment is, I talked about this area when I substituted for Mayor Norris at the last reserves meeting. And the particular comment I made about the area comes from what I've learned from the folks in Kanema, about the Kanema bluffs, and that is, it is a very significant Native American archaeological site. I can't imagine that that significance does not extend into an area like this. That's just an inference. I mean, archaeological studies are confidential under, you know, the state regulations, so I don't know if there's ever been on Shippo's part, or anybody's part, an actual inventory of Native American archaeological sites, and even if that's a criteria for, you know, designation as, you know, reserves or undesignedated, et cetera. But I think it's, I think it's something we need to, as we consider this, be very careful about, and I don't know, I don't even know if one can ask Shippo, what do you guys know about this area without telling us where specific sites are? You know, just what do you guys know?
We can, we sort of, we ask Shippo all the time, we've done it with other projects in the city. What you're probably gonna find, though, is that they usually don't get involved unless there's some type of development that's come forward, or a property owner is interested in it. You know, I don't know if any work was done on the metro-owned properties as part of their due diligence to purchase them, so there may be some information on the metro property. I would be more hopeful on those than the private ownership ones.
Right. Which leads to the second comment, is Metro has the very aggressive natural areas acquisition program. They permit, they've purchased Kanema bluffs, they've also purchased some stuff down, you know, in the Willamette Narrows, and this area is kind of a connecting bridge between the two. And I think that's, I don't know if that's part of the analysis that goes into this, which leads into the question is, do we know what Metro is considering as part, as whether this area is in their gun sights as far as, you know, potential purchase as part of that natural areas program?
I don't know about the purchase, but it's not urban in there, in the Metro executives' recommendation.
Okay. So that, I guess, the second question, then, is totally unrelated. Is the ownership of that Area Seven unitary, fragmented? How many owners are there out of the private land? If it's timberland, you'd figure there'd be just a couple.
Yeah, what you see is quite a few, starting here, and there's probably six to seven lots that continue around in this manner, all under single...
So those light lines I'm seeing are the property lines?
Yeah, the tax lot lines underneath, those are all under single ownership. Gets a little bit more fragmented as you move north along here.
Yeah, when you move north, you can see there are a lot of existing industrial-type uses there, and that's the area where there might be some potential area, and back of that is, there's a really large bowl back there that's relatively flat, that you had, probably would have some potential for development.
Commissioner Neely?
Commissioner Nocida, his concerns about the archaeological value, I think, is important. Commissioner Nocita, his concerns about the archaeological value, I think, is important. The reason Metro is purchasing property there, I think it represents the Oaks of Anna lands that are very, very rare and threatened and so forth. And I'm going to make a guess, there's still some such lands in this area as well. I mean, I felt some of the justification that some county commissioners, and I believe Mr. Edgar also spoke to this land as well, in terms of employment land, but I think the issues are such that I'm going to recommend we throw it out from our consideration. The only concern I've got is actually a road going down there.
Road. That's my concern.
But, but I can't, I can't believe that when that need come, is, is dictated that we wouldn't be able to work out something with the county.
Would, would that be a throw it out as not urban, or that it should be rural, or that it should be not designated?
Well, you know, you, you made the statement, Cora, and it was important that we all understand that, because frankly, I didn't understand until the last impact meeting that I, I attended in place of Mayor Norris. That undesignation is, applies to the whole region.
Yes.
And Oregon City is not going to be able to say, well, this is undesignedated, but we're meeting our, we're, we're expanding in our area, and we'd like to have some more area. If somebody else is expanding in their area, we're not going to get it un-undesignated. So it's not, even if we, even if we classified it as undesignedated, I don't know if that would do us any good in terms of the road.
Well, I guess the one question that I know I've had a discussion with the mayor about was, is there going to be an amendment process that comes down the lane in five years, or 10 years, or 15 years when we come back and reassess this? And if it's, and, and that, that process may be that only undesignedated properties are considered not rural. I mean, so I don't think anybody knows exactly what those...
I don't have any problem having it undesignedated. If, if you think there'd be a mechanism by which we could put through a road to service the upper area, probably more likely to be able to do that as an undesignedated area than we would a rural area. And so maybe, maybe that's what we could do then.
Yeah, because I don't see the county driving that. I think that, I think that's very difficult. It's our urbanization issue, not the county's, I think, so. I mean, I'm happy with the undesignedated for now. Well, I'm looking forward to the work session, too, to talk about the other issues a little more. Commissioner Nocita.
Just a point of process, I want a clarification on the commission report statement here. Allow public comment, discuss, and make a recommendation to Clackamas County regarding urban and rural reserves for areas around and adjacent to Oregon City. When we chatted about this with the planning commission, my assumption was that we were going to have like a public hearing and full public comment on these areas.
No. So...
Okay, was this noticed as public comment tonight?
As...
Well, only in terms of a posted agenda and communication with Beaver Creek Hamlet.
So this...
I mean, there's, there's not a legal requirement for a public hearing.
Right.
But if you, that's, that's at your discretion, commission's discretion.
Okay. So the further clarification is, we're talking about a work session.
Yeah.
So I, I guess my question is, when are we making the decision on this? Right now, after the work session?
No, I think it needs to be tonight. Well, it doesn't need to be, but it's, we, we essentially have forwarded to the county the discussion points that we made with the planning commission. So that's our sort of preliminary, but it's not official, so.
And I was just going to add that it's, it's the county that has the responsibility to hold the public hearings, because they're the decision maker.
Sure.
We're, we're not, the city isn't making a decision, we're advising the, the county on what our city's position is.
But I, but I think what we're doing is designated our, we're, we're designating what, really the future of our community. So I think, I think the action that we take is very important. So I think it's certainly possible that we could have areas for further study, but it needs to happen very quickly.
Okay. Because I wasn't clear on it, so I guess there might be people who also are clear on it. The work session is, you're talking about next Tuesday?
Correct.
Okay. And would the public be able to come in and...
It's your prerogative.
Discuss, discuss it then?
It could, yes.
But then we wouldn't be in an open meeting to make a decision during a work session?
No. So I think we, we, we need to deliberate on whether we can make a decision tonight, and I think if there are some areas that we can't agree on, we certainly can hold those, we can hold those over.
And I know there are some people here that have come to speak.
Come to testify, yeah, no. We want that, and actually, hmm, we're actually making a recommendation to the reserves committee next Wednesday.
Correct.
So I think to have anything beyond next Wednesday leaves, leaves us out.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, Commissioner Neely.
Maybe we'd have enough time to notice. I don't know why we, after our work session, we could not have a special commission meeting notice it. Because frankly, I mean, some of the things that you're referring to, that you're going to talk about in the study session, they want to inform the decisions that we're making right now.
And I could certainly go through those.
No, and I understand that, but I think we need to go through this discussion right now. But I'm going to suggest that we probably not make a decision tonight, and actually ask for a special commission meeting following the work session on Tuesday.
I, that's a great idea. I agree with that.
And then only give us, gives, give us a chance to digest what we've, what we hear in the public hearing.
Right.
Is that okay?
Yes.
That is fine. Well, yes, we do.
We do.
You have one dilemma.
Mm-hmm.
You have what appears to be an all-night work session. So if you deal with those issues, you may be looking at 11 or 12 o'clock before you get to a commission meeting. It depends on how much you talk, I mean, it may go an hour. I can't predict that, but there, there is a lot of items on that agenda, and I'll be glad to go get it and bring it back to you.
I understand that, but I think, fifteen as indicated by our city recorder, but I can't, I can't help but believe this is the most important item of work session. And we're talking about a 50, 50-year future here. And I, I come from the Dan Fowler era, when we were here until 2:00 AM in the morning on some occasions, so that...
At your prerogative.
Of course, I'm old now, I'm not sure how I stand up to it.
Okay, what about, what about this? What about this? The work session begins at 5:00, correct?
5:30.
5:30? If we could start at 5:00, that would be great.
Start at 5:00.
And so then...
Well, I, I think he'd have a problem.
You can't come to 5:00?
No.
I can't, I can't come at noon.
Oh.
Can you come at 4:00?
Can you come early? Can you come at 4:00?
Why don't we, why don't we do it at 4:00? It enables us to take a break perhaps after the, after the work session, to get a bite to eat and...
Metro's having a hearing here, too, the same night. Okay, if we can start at 4:00, then we could have a commission meeting at 7:00, and we'll just break, we'll break for it.
Yeah, we could break for it.
And then we can go forward.
I would suggest if there is some way we could structure the work session items so we could throw them over, even if we have another work session later this month to deal with those. But this is so important.
We haven't really looked at ordering those items, so...
I, I think, I think the mayor has to be in a position at the metro meeting to actually put forward what our decision is.
That would be one week from today.
And that would be one week from today.
So that would give me, give me an evening to think about it.
I just asked permission to bring my pillow.
Sure, no problem. Okay.
I'll have Colin bring those 20, 20-ounce cups of Starbucks.
So we're okay with that?
What time should we advertise?
7:00.
7:00, okay.
We have 7:00, that'll be a good time for break.
I guess for the public notice, are you, with a, with a less, you know, one-week turnaround, I'm not sure what you're looking for, for public notice. We're going to have, we're, I mean, our, our normal public notice for a city commission meeting is that we posted it, agencies or library and whatnot. Are, is that acceptable, or are you expecting more than that?
Well, I think if we could...
Well, we wouldn't make it in the newspapers at this point.
No, probably wouldn't. Well, Oregonian.
We could do the Oregonian, but we'd be expensive.
Well, no.
Can we put a promise prominently on the, on the homepage of the website?
Okay, so you, so if we can do some type of those, you're not looking for a mass mailing or anything like that?
No, we just, we need to allow additional opportunity because we are discussing new, we're discussing new areas, so I think that does give the public...
So let me make sure, we're going to start at 4:00?
4:00.
And you want to start a council meeting at 7:00?
Yes.
So that means we need to look at the items and strip those off the work sessions so that you can end and go to 7:00.
Yep.
Yes, but we may, we could reconvene depending on how long the hearing takes. So I'll look at the agenda with you, because we haven't looked at that ordering it. Is that possible?
Well, we can, I mean, any of those things you can...
It's three hours, that's...
Push back. I mean, it's, these are all things that you requested.
Yeah.
We structure, we structure the work sessions so that the...
Let's just look at those items.
The ones that aren't that critical, we can put off.
Great idea.
And it might be another work session this month.
And, and we haven't looked at that together, so...
We'll, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Tony. Okay, so are there, I think we need to continue tonight.
Oh, yes. And for one thing, we got people that want to speak to us.
Well, we do that, too, but let's continue going through the areas.
Yep.
Because, let's see, the only other difference we have, okay, so the differences that we have are Area 6 with the county, and, but they may also come to agree with us on that one.
Yes.
Yeah. And then Area 4, and then this Area 7, otherwise...
I want a discussion on Area 2.
Area 2?
I, did we have Area 8 on the last one?
No.
No, 7 and 8 were new, but it sounds like 8's going to fall off.
Okay. I, I was curious as to why you got on it in the first place on this matter.
Well, we weren't sure what part of Kanema, how far south you wanted us to look.
Okay, just recovering their bases, I think. Okay, let's go back then to, oh...
Excuse me, you say Area 4, and...
We talked about Area 4.
We're going to talk about it, right?
You may talk about it some more, if you like.
Or are we waiting to, I don't know?
No, I think we want to be, I think we want to know which ones we have concerns about as well. And the public, of course, will let us know which ones they have concerns about, but... Okay, Area 4, did you want to talk about Area 4?
Now I got, now I have to have a reminder. All my, all, everything I know from TAC was U1, U8, U7, and now we got these areas here. Area 4 exactly corresponds to what?
Oh, we can get to that.
That's U6.
U6.
Yeah, U6.
That's a bingo.
Hmm?
U6.
Yeah, that's the, that's, that's the bingo. And therefore, yes, I want to discuss Area 4.
Okay. Lead on.
Area 2, we can drop. Area 4.
Okay, well, let's, go ahead, lead on, because we already, the staff already presented it.
No, first of all, Area 3, I think, is, is a bit more important.
Let's start.
Okay.
If I, if we're going to go for that, we're going to have this discussion, and here's, here's where we come up with, yeah. I think we probably need a little bit of your, of your work session presentation at this point, maybe an abbreviated one.
Okay. So the, the last meeting, when we left, we were asked to discuss and look up about a memorandum of understanding concerning tree protection that we might be able to utilize for when cities are looking to annex to the city, the Oregon Forest Practices Act, and what the implications of that are, if the property is brought into the city, and then the forest property tax deferral. Concerning tree protection, we did prepare a resolution that has been, I believe, before the city commission before, concerning, it would be a, a policy statement concerning property owners not clearcutting their property before it's brought into the city. If they do clearcut it, here's what the city recommends you do, and this would be a consideration, though not an approval criteria, when an annexation application is brought forward. And those identified, you could go back to our code for our natural resource overlay district and put in mitigation around the streams. You could utilize our tree protection code and replant the property per the standards in, in that, so...
But we also talked about an IGA with the county to make sure that what, that property that remains in the county also, that we have an understanding about that with the county.
Right.
So that our protection is their protection.
And I think that rolls into this, the Trees Task Force that the Clackamas County put together, that they, they created a draft regulation for a tree removal permit process to regulate the removal and mitigation of certain trees. As I stated earlier, the draft regulation exempts those properties that are receiving a property tax deferral for farm or forest lands, but it does attach to it, and they couldn't decide whether it be a five-year or a 10-year prohibition on land use applications. So if you went in and you had a property that's in tax deferment, property tax deferral, and you logged it, it would be somewhere between, they're recommending five and 10 years, where the county would not accept nor approve an application for a partition, subdivision, conditional use. You could probably add on to their annexation, and that would probably roll into some type of an IGA or memorandum of understanding if this is adopted, and this is something we can agree to. The second issue is the Forest Practices Act, Oregon Forest Practices Act. And what it says is that there's a section that specifically talks about restrictions local governments can place on timberlands. And what it says is, the first part is, "No unit of local government shall adopt any rule, regulation, ordinance, et cetera, to, that requires the project to be subject to any approval or any other way affect forest practices on forest lands located outside of an acknowledged urban growth boundary." Second section states, "Nothing in subsection 1," which I just read, "prohibits local governments from adopting and applying a comprehensive plan or land use regulation to forest land to allow, prohibit, or regulate forest practices on lands located within an acknowledged urban growth boundary." And we have had discussions with the Oregon Department of Forestry, and so what it says is that, and how they interpret it, is that the, the objective is that either the local jurisdiction takes over and regulates, or the Oregon Forest Practices Act regulates. But then there are some options in there where you can, the local government can decide that we're going to take over the practice, we're going to write a forest practice ordinance, and we're going to implement it. And the Oregon, it needs to be reviewed by the Department of Forestry, it needs to meet the same goals and objectives that the Oregon Forest Practices Act meets. But in that case, the local jurisdiction would take over the regulation of that forest property for that use, and whether that be prohibiting it from, from clearcutting, requiring selective logging, I mean, you can see how you can write an ordinance to accomplish whatever you like. Second option is that the local government may opt to regulate forest practices on only a portion of the, of the property within the urban growth boundary or city limit. For example, we could determine that we want to regulate all forest practices within our natural resource overlay district, so within 100 feet of a stream. If you have a timber property that's located outside of that 100 feet, you would be under the Oregon Forest Practices Act. So you've kind of got a split jurisdiction there. They're not too excited about those types of situations where you have split jurisdictions. Second one would be where if you have a property that's in tax deferral, the part of the property that's in the tax deferral for the forest used to be regulated by the Oregon Forest Protection Act, and the property, part of the property that's not in the tax deferral would fall under our jurisdiction for a partition or a subdivision, or whatever else they propose to do on that property. And then the last option is that we don't do anything, and the, the regulations and requirements of the Oregon Forest Protection Act are implemented on properties within the city, and they're regulated by the Oregon Department of Forestry. So whatever standards you're allowed to do outside of the urban growth boundary, you'd be allowed to do within the city limits. So there's several options for how we could address the Oregon Forest Protection Act.
Okay, that, I, I think, you're right, I think that's okay. I think for, for me, the protection of the jewel that is New Oak Creek Canyon is, is really paramount, because, I mean, as I've said before, this is the first time that, that I think many of us in the environmental community also is in agreement that probably because it's now surrounded by a city, that the greater protection is within the city as long as we are clear about our environmental overlay and our, and our codes. So I, I haven't seen the language, but it was my understanding that Clackamas County was going to, when they designated that as urban, going to make sure that they called out the jewel of New Oak Creek Canyon, and that our joint intent is that that remain a... a, a pristine area.
And, and I guess we, we should probably have some more conversations about that, because as I stated earlier, all of New Creek Canyon in the county is zoned timberland, and the timber code from Clackamas County is to conserve forest lands, to minimize wildfire hazards and risks. Area of applications, land suitable for forest use or lands predominantly capable of generating at least 85 cubic feet of timber per acre per year, so we've got...
Can be cut.
Yes, exactly. I think we just...
If it's in the county.
Can it be, well, it is in the county.
Yeah.
And it will be, but, so if, so if a logging operation occurs, that has to occur only on the property, I mean, can it scar the land next to it? I mean, I...
Everything, everything outside of the Oregon City urban growth boundary, right now, in between our city limits...
Right.
And 213 is all zoned timber.
Okay.
The entire area, obviously, a lot of that's owned by Metro.
Metro owns it.
So you don't have that issue, but it's outside of our urban growth boundary, thereby it would fall under the Oregon Forest.
Okay, Commissioner Neely.
First of all, if we don't annex it, none of our jurisdiction applies.
Correct.
Right.
If we do annex it, then the people that live in that property will pay city taxes.
Correct.
And they will have a higher tax rate.
Correct, the, we did look up, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The forest property tax deferral, the Clackamas County 2008 Tax Rate Book identified the total rate for Oregon City as roughly $17.72 per thousand assessed value, and the Clackamas County tax rate as $13.58 per thousand assessed value. But as I stated earlier, if they have a farmer-forest tax deferral in place, it does not matter if you are in the city or outside of the city, that tax deferral will remain in place until such time as you change the use or do not qualify.
But not all that land may have tax deferrals, it still may be unbuildable, and we still won't have control of it if we annexed it, and if we annexed it, then they're gonna have to pay city taxes, and they can't, and then they cannot urbanize.
That is correct, but there are portions of it that are urbanizable, and then there are portions of it that, that would be reflected in the value of the property if it is unbuildable. The, you know, there are other alternatives to just getting a tax deferral, the applicant could go and have an easement put on the property, a conservation easement, which drastically reduced their taxes. You know, the other component of this is that, you know, their taxes would be based on, if it's, if all you can get is a single-family house, that's what your tax is gonna be based on, it's not gonna be based on 10 acres that can be developed at four or five units per acre.
But they're still gonna have a land assessment that's higher than what they pay now, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's still my point, it's not urbanizable, and even if, even if you only have the one house, but they have 10 acres, that 10 acres would be taxed at a higher rate.
But there are options to reduce that tax, whether it be through the tax deferral program or to put it in conservation.
Well, say it's not in tax deferral program, so then it's in a conservation easement, what does that imply? Person cuts their wood for firewood, we're gonna let them do it? If it's in a conservation easement?
I guess it's gonna depend on how it's written, what the intended use of it was. If, if all you're doing is giving up your development, right, there are probably provision, I don't know the answer to that, we would have to look up to see how conservation easements are written in terms of what uses can be allowed. I think the other important thing is that you have several properties in this New Creek Canyon that are, that are lot sizes of 5,000 square foot or less, that are urban for every intents and purpose, they use every urban service in the city to get through here, they use the streets to get through here, it's not like these, it's, it's coming through the county on county roads, so there is that equity issue of utilizing city services, city sewer, city water, I mean, for all intents and purposes, it is right there, and there are several, several lots in the corner up here off of Morton, and you also have B&amp;B Leasing, a commercial use...
Yeah, in the county.
In the county, in forest land. So you have multiple competing issues where you, you have several properties that are in...
People drive through Oregon City every day that don't live in the city, they're still using our services, that, that argument doesn't hold much weight for me, so they leave their house across city and land. We got people that are going to Portland, they go through city and land, and then that use those city services, I, I can't buy that argument.
I guess, I draw a difference if you live five miles outside the city.
They live next to the city and they still use it.
Right.
And in fact, they make trips to Hagan's every, you know, two or three times a week.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I don't know that I can buy that argument.
But I guess if you lived in the county, you have an alternative route. These, these properties have absolutely no way to exit their properties.
They might have an alternative route, it may go all the way to 99E, but, you know, that, and instead of using 213, but I, I don't think anybody would logically use that particular route, I mean, it's not a very good alternative.
It's, it's something to think about.
Yeah, I'm gonna suggest to me, if I may, as we go through this, if we leave this particular area, before we leave this particular area, on an area and area by basis, we got people that wanna speak to them, these issues, we probably ought, if they have specific areas they wish to speak to, we should permit that to happen while we're talking about it.
Well, yeah, sure, Commissioner West, first.
So in Area Three, if we did not put that in an urban, would we be creating islands between the other parts, between that, would it become a pocket? Is everything in around it, or three-quarters of the way, or two-thirds of the way?
If, if you did not take in any of Area Three...
Yeah.
Um, I believe you would still have a section along Everneppe Creek where technically it would not be completely surround, it would be a small area.
So, so the majority of it would become an island, then?
That's correct.
And that was the reason for Metro's recommendation?
Right, I mean, it's...
And the county, too, because it's now very, very surrounded, so, did you finish?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Neely.
One other thing, we gotta be very careful that we're, I'm not in favor of doing away all of Area Three, and I wanna go back to the, to the Policy Advisory Committee's recommendation, designate closer in flatter areas, including around Holly Lane, as urban reserve. So we're talking about, Area Three includes more than New Creek Canyon.
Correct.
And, so, I just wanted to make that clear to anybody that's listening and thinking that perhaps I'm objecting to, including in the urban reserve, all of Area Three. I'm not.
And so what you see on Area Three here, roughly, this is 213 running north-south, Newell Creek Canyon, these are the Metro-owned properties in Newell Creek Canyon, and then this would be, here's Holly Lane, on this side of 213.
Yeah, for me, Holly Lane is the stickier wicket, because the properties close to Holly Lane are fairly flat, and then it drops off severely, and, but to cut through those properties in designation, you know, it sounds like an area of complexity, so that, they're certainly not developable, and they wouldn't, or they don't show up here on your developable land counts, do they?
Well, it was...
You've had to take those out.
We, yeah, what you see is actually, there's a sliver along the east, the back end, that's the steep slope, so even though it falls off, it's not greater than, it's not registering as greater than 25 percent.
It's a ridge.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, there's a ridge that where all of a sudden it does, you do have a, a greater break in slope.
What, you wanna, should we go into the public hearing, or to the testimony?
For this one?
Sure, well, I think, I think we know all areas, so people can feel free to speak which ones they want, I think.
Well, I haven't spoken to Area Four, but I'd rather have a public hearing on Area Three.
Well, let's see what people want to talk about. Richard Langdon and Kyoko Gudier, I'm not sure how, let's see, we'll have to wait for a minute for Tony to clear off.
Tony, come on in.
And just to review, you just need to give your name and the city in which you live, or if you live in the county, then Clackamas County.
My name is Kyoko Nanet Gudier, I reside in Clackamas, Oregon. I own the property at 18878 South Nancy Marie Lane, which is a private road of the Maple Lane, Oregon City. In looking at the Oregon City map, this was recommended by Oregon City to Clackamas County to be brought into the urban reserve. However, this has not been included by Clackamas County. I and some of my neighbors are wondering why this Beaver Creek Hamlet area, which is in Area Four, I believe, according to Bob's map, the, is not included in Clackamas County's recommendation to Metro. We are confused as to why, is it because the, you know, all the road has been built right next to the property, and all the utilities are in, however, is still not included in Clackamas County's recommendation to Metro? Is it the county is ignoring Oregon City's recommendation, or is it just oversight, somehow it's got left out accidentally, and which, that's why it's not included? I, I feel this should be on Metro's map and identified as part of the urban reserve.
I can answer that question partially.
Okay.
As Commissioner Neely was saying, that area originally was listed as urban designation, somehow we think it, we don't, we're not sure how it fell off, so it did fall off. We have asked for it to be designated as an urban reserve, and we, we think that the county will do that, they just haven't gotten around to it yet. Is that the best explanation?
Since we, since I don't know exactly where your property is, I wanna be a little call.
She said in Area Four.
In Area Four, but that's not off of Maple Lane?
I, I can, I'll point that out at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but, but I don't know, is, is there an area in Area Four that in fact has access to Maple Lane? I don't think so.
Oh, yes, I can point it out in just a minute.
Right, let's right through it.
Maple Lane is pretty much in the middle of Area Four.
Oh.
You can see that large manufactured home park, and Maple Lane is right to the south of that.
Maple Lane, that much runs right about, right about there in this map.
Okay, thank you. So that's the status, as far as we know, so, thank you, we'll, we'll follow that.
Please do.
Yeah, yes, we will.
Mr. Langdon.
My name is Richard Langdon, I, I've been asked by the family, Gudier family, to help them through this process, and I was happy to do so, and I was honored to do so. The, we have spoken with others in that same Beaver Creek Hamlet, and they have expressed their interest in being included in urban reserve as well, but I wish they could have made it tonight. This has moved along faster than, than I've had the time to get here and do things about this, and it's my own fault, too much to do.
We understand.
The, we would like to see Area Four brought in, it is confusing to us, and we know there is support within the area for this urban reserve, and not, honestly, there's, there's a lot of people in that area that would just soon stay on their five acres of ground and, and not be developed, and that's fine, but yet, I've spoken with those people, and they're still interested in having this, because it's a 50-year plan, and they don't know what in the world's gonna happen with their family, and if they will leave, and what their children want to do with this property, and it is so appropriate that it should be an urban reserve. We've got roads that John Jones has sending, that stubs right into these appropriate areas to develop, they're flat, they have all services available to them, they're smack dab up against the UGB, and smacked up against the city limits, and they were developed like that and approved, those flats, because naturally, those areas would be developed, and they're the easiest ones to do, as opposed to down in Gorgeous Creek property, you know, which is, and I do understand the concern about, with Area Three, that you wouldn't want to, it's, it's a housekeeping issue about surrounding and making areas islands, that's not right either, but there must be some good solution for Area Three, but this is a case where there is no reason to leave this out, and it's, was kinda like, it, it almost was horseshoed during that time of the UGB in, in a funny way, and probably just an oversight, you know, who knows why. Anyway, we wanna let, make sure that you, you're aware, that the people I've spent time with, and, and certainly the Gudier family are in support of this being inside, and that they're, and we will do anything that you ask to go that direction. I've spent some time with Doug McLean and Lynn Peterson, and I will continue to do that. Got a call from Commissioner Peterson's office again today from one of the staff, asking me to speak, let her, let them know about my concerns, and called back, never got a hold on, but I will, I will be there, and if there's additional meetings, I'd be, I'd sure like to know about it with Dan, Dan will inform me, and I'll, I'll be there.
Public, is a public hearing next Tuesday.
I, I got that one figured out, right there.
Well, not actually here, but there's also one at the county.
Oh, oh, yeah. I, I intend to be there as well, I'm hoping this isn't too late to, to repair this, this problem.
It's not, no, you're very timely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, any questions at all?
Commissioner Neely.
This is my confusion, I'm, I am not certain why it is that the Area Four does not include that area along Holly Lane, I mean, where was that decision made? I mean, I got the recommendation from the PAC here that it is included, and now I see it's cut off, and the last maps we had actually had these two things adjacent in, in terms of one area, and now we've split off that area around Holly Lane, apparently.
No, it's included.
It's, it's the boundary of the same, just that one area made it through.
Well, where does, can you trace it for me where Holly Lane's running through? I'm just, I'm a bit confused.
Right there.
That's Holly Lane.
Okay, so that's all within Area Three. Okay, so there is a disconnect between Area Four and Area Three, then?
Yes.
Okay, that was my confusion.
Yeah, that's the watershed, we wanted to keep the watershed separate.
Maple Lane is the one that, that bisects Area Four.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, by the way, the, I apologize, I have one more thing to add to that, is the, the address that was given by Ms. Gudier was Nancy Marie Lane, it's a private road that is off of Maple Lane, and it's actually, it's the 18878, the same number, South Maple Lane would be identifiable, but Nancy Marie Lane somehow is stuck.
No, it's okay.
Put the name up there, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Paul Laker, followed by Shaw Spady.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The job area, I'd like to talk primarily about Number Seven, and about the Kanema area, about, right now, when you go down 99, what you'll see to the uphill from, or the, if you're going towards Canby, you'll see, just past Kanema, a whole industrial area. They ODOT widened the road, there's a big bowl, it has the ability to connect sewer right down along the river, just like it is done right now through Kanema, from Kanema down, so it doesn't have to go up over the hill or anything, so there's no real big hydraulic problem associated with it if you use the same technique that was used to pump from Kanema down into Oregon City, identical, so we just follow that same method, methodology. Number two, it's jobs area. We critically need areas within this Oregon City where we can have family wage jobs, and this happens to be an area that can, where it can happen. I'd also like to address Mr. Nacida's concerns about native stuff. I had the opportunity to walk the whole area with native chiefs from Grand Ron and some of their archivists, and because, with my wife, because my wife is part Nez Perce, a lot of stuff was talked out to us that not, would not otherwise be known. And let me assure you that the areas up above the hill, along the bluff, is not an area that we're talking about, and this is almost the same as looking at above Holly Lane, where there are some slide zones or ancient slides, we're not talking about that, we're really talking about the flat or the bowl down below, and taking advantage of that that has rail access, good road access, good water access, and for Mayor Norris, the same logic that you use for the need for having proper urban zoning for Holly Lane... zoning for Holly Lane so that you can do this is identical to the same logic that is needed for us to be able to extend a road off of South End area or that hilltop area down into Highway 99. And this is, becomes critical because Highway 99 in itself is a, going south end road is a weight-restricted road owned by the county and therefore we have no ability whatsoever to expand or to expand that road and this really became, becomes literally the only way that we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nacida.
I think what I'd like to do is ask Dan and Tony for next week's discussion. Could we include a map with the topography lines on it?
The bigger, we'll have the big ones.
Yeah, well, I'd like one, yeah, I'd like one map without the lot lines but with the topo lines. That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neely.
Clarification, how far south along 99E does our urban growth boundary extend?
This right here is the southern boundary of our urban growth boundary. You have a thin extension down 99E southbound and then it brought in one layer of property, tax lots along 99E and then comes back up.
This is probably part of the bowl that's being discussed.
It's right near the edge of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Shaw?
Hi, I have to introduce myself, Shaw Spadey.
Yes, please.
I live in Oregon City in Area 3 outside the urban growth boundary. I'd like to speak to general context first of all. Anytime you bring property into the urban growth boundary or into an urban reserve, you're doing so at the intention of maximizing density, that is the purpose. So, I don't, in my mind, see how one can protect resources, especially in sensitive slopes and Newell Creek Canyon is not the only place that has unstable slopes. Area 4 is full of them, the entire, I mean, and so, when you then bring it in, what you're saying to people is you have the right to intensely develop your land. So I'm not sure how all of these things come together, but I believe it's Measure 37 or whatever the measure is that allows people the right to maximize the use of their land. I, I think some of these areas, there is such a thing as a carrying capacity of the land. The city itself has had the experience of Newell Creek Apartments and the fact that in building in these sensitive areas, you have to take care and do due diligent maintenance. It was mentioned during the application process, which we fought for I don't know how many years, that if you have gutters that are disconnected, then you end up with landslides. Well, the apartment complex wasn't that old, the gutters were disconnected and there's landslides. The city becomes liable, the people living in the places are out of homes and some of these areas, I just personally do not believe are buildable. I believe the thing called carrying capacity of the land means something. It was in the state land use laws for a reason, originally, the Oregon Senate bill. Secondly, I lived in Newell Creek Canyon where the 1.7 million gallons of raw sewage flowed into Newell Creek for months with no one noticing. I noticed because I'm aware and sensitive of the land, there's hundreds of people living in apartments right next door who, I'm assuming have no olfactory nerves, but the fact is that the city supposedly has in place mechanisms to avoid these sorts of disasters. But the fact is, even though there was, in retrospect, an issue with that pumping station, nothing was done about it. So, I am firmly not convinced that bringing any of these sensitive lands, I mean, any of them, into the city will provide any more protection than leaving them alone. And I'd also like to say the Forest Services, the Oregon Forest Practices Act allows for clear cutting on steep slopes, they have completely decimated the Mackenzie River in private lands and I just don't see that putting land that shouldn't be developed into a high-pressure situation where it's focused on development makes any sense. I think it's not an appropriate thing to do.
And we are, and that's why we're talking about an environmental overlay of some kind. As you know, the Newell Creek Canyon Apartments would not be permitted under today's codes. So, that's what we're going to be looking at.
One other item that Carlotta Colette, who is the Metro Counselor from our area, has actually recommended no expansion of the urban growth boundary in order to highly densify within it and so, even looking at the expansion of all of this is not in everyone's basic philosophy. There's many people that think that is erroneous thing to be doing, so, that's all, thank you.
Erroneous to expand?
Yes. I mean, there's many people who are philosophically behind Carlotta's stance to not expand the urban growth boundary any further. So this discussion, I don't even hear that conversation happening, it would be nice to talk about that, too.
Yeah, no, I think that's the basic assumption, you just didn't get that part of it.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine, we haven't said it tonight, actually.
And I will not be here next Tuesday, I'll be gone for the month, so if someone would find it within themselves to somehow mention some of my concerns, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, we'll do that.
Sure, someone will.
I might make a follow-up to this Area 3 issue. Mr. Conkle mentioned the fact that there are areas there that are not that steep sloped and that's true. Does this mean that the only environmentally important lands, sensitive lands and so forth, the steep slope lands are the ones that can, that can be protected and the ones that are flatter can be built upon? I think I could make an argument that there are probably pieces of Ms. Spadey's property that could possibly be built upon. And so that if we bring this in and she has some kind of mental breakdown and decides she wants to annex into Oregon City, we lose, we lose that as an area that's protected. And the point is, I think the whole area that's there ought to be protected. Why not have a continuous? Well, I don't think you're in a position to do it if you're going to say, we're going to let our steep ordinance and our conservation districts and so forth rule. The conservation easements are going to come from the property owners, not from us. The best way to do it, from my standpoint, is not urbanize it, period.
I guess, would you like us to look into some type of an environmental zone?
I would like us to reject it, is what I'd like us to do. But you can go ahead and look into other things.
No, if there's no interest, we won't waste the time, obviously.
Well, actually, if it remains, if it stays rural, it can continue to develop at the, in the rural standard. If it is undesignated, it can continue. It's just that, I'm concerned with, with the pressure of development. I guess what's interesting to me, I know Commissioner Charlotte Lehan is very, very high on having this be protected by Oregon City and she wants us to look at the, at what Wilsonville does. They do an overlay on, on sensitive areas so that it remains as the community wants it to be.
I think it's a definition of sensitive areas and I think you have areas in there that are not sensitive, that can be developed and I'm saying that why not have the whole area intact as an area that's not going to be urbanized?
Well, I think the county would say that that's a problem.
I don't represent the county.
No, 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 and I don't either, I'm just trying to figure out how I make an argument because the county doesn't really want to, you know, I'm not sure that they're going to pay attention.
We can put it on the county's doorstep, I don't want it on mine.
Well, I mean, as I said, I've wrestled with this and this is the first time that I have, have come to the conclusion that, you know, in consultation with some of my colleagues, like Mike Houck and a thousand friends, that now that it is surrounded and developed on three sides.
If Mike Houck wants to put an argument here that this should be urbanized, let him come forward here. I don't want somebody's private discussions with other people outside this body to direct what's going to happen.
No, 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 I understand that, I'm just, I'm telling you my thought processes as I've evolved because to date, I've thought that it was better protected outside the city, but now, we have, we're doing urban reserves on three sides of it.
And we've got the possibility and the probability that we'd end up taxing at city rates properties that are in fact, unless you annex it, you can't protect it.
That's right.
And so then you're going to tax these properties that cannot be urbanized at an urban rate. So you're looking at protection, but you also need to look at property rights.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Anyway, I want to bring Area 2 in or I want to make a more general discussion.
Okay, but I think we need to take a break first, so let's take, till 9:15. So, what is your pleasure then, oh, let's see, Doug, I actually wanted to discuss Area 2.
Yep.
This is the urbanized areas along Henrissi Road.
Well, I'm going to put the same argument, which you say we're working with the county on it, but in any case, I'm going to put the same argument for Areas 6 and 2. Where we can avoid it, I do feel we should not be moving into new watersheds. And Area 6 as drawn, although we're slightly in the Crackamas River watershed, not to the extent this area is here, I think we should confine ourselves here, actually, in the Area 6 area, to the Abernathy Creek watershed and make sure that we don't have it. And your argument, of course, is from a transportation standpoint, Forsyth Road is, is probably a non-urbanizable road or if we do it, we're probably going to pull out sections of our water treatment plant in order to make it work. I mean, we've had slides off of Forsyth Road adjacent to that water treatment plant on the steep canyon side and I don't, I just don't think it's a good transportation corridor and I think those are probably the arguments that you're making in the process. But I would also argue that, yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure, you know that we're not designating this whole area.
Well, no, but...
We're just designating it, that little piece.
I understand that, but the point is, what the county had presented did go extend into the Crackamas River watershed.
Exactly, exactly.
And so, what I'm trying to put in is unifying argument and I'm going to now come to Area 2 on.
Oh, I see, okay.
All right.
Gotcha.
Area 2, we are actually moving out in various areas outside the Caulfield Creek watershed. And I realize, I realize a lot of that area has urban density. If you go down in Henrissi Road though, you'll find, I'll call them the rural cul-de-sacs that exist there, most of them extend north often in Henrissi, not south. Now, there are a couple of that are off south, but most of them where you see, if you only go by the picture of what you see off of Henrissi Road itself, you may think, well, a lot of that, a lot of that stuff's on the south side. In fact, you have a lot of cul-de-sac type of structures that go off into the north side. I would guess most of those north side areas are in fact within the Caulfield drainage, but once you cross Henrissi, you're in a different stream system. And I would argue that we should confine our expansion in Area 2 to the Caulfield watershed. I think once you go into watersheds and now you're putting on urban pressures on a watershed and I think we need to do our watershed planning within the watershed and not jump watersheds.
I guess what I'd say there is that this area is already urbanized. I mean, it looks, when you drive down it, as we did, it, it looks like any other, almost any other street in Oregon City.
You could go down Wilson Road, you could go down Wilson Road between Beaver Creek and Ferguson.
Doesn't look much the same.
Almost all the way, there are houses that are only about 40 or 50 feet, I mean, 50 to 100 feet wide. That looks urbanized, too. You've got, if you're going to make your arguments on urbanized and you put up the map on a broader spectrum, you'll find parcels all over the place in which you see urban densities that exist.
But this is adjacent.
I understand it's adjacent. They, if their septic systems fail, then we have, we have currently, they have no alternative except to fix their septic systems, to annex and under those conditions, they annex. But the point is, yes, they're urbanized, but many of them are in lot sizes that it would be very difficult to develop. That is, the parcelization of those properties would be very difficult because you've got a big house there and then you've got land on every other side and it'd be very, very difficult to urbanize it. Same problem that we have in other areas that we brought into the city. And I personally feel that, that if it's an issue of the septic tank failures coming in, then we're obligated to annex them. City manager has suggested that perhaps in the future, we can develop a situation where we don't even have to annex them, that we in fact put them on our sewer, on our sewer system and charge them the rates for using our sewer facilities and doing the hookups. But I personally don't want to jump Henrissi Road. And the argument is, you're going into another watershed.
I think I'm going to comment.
Yeah, Commissioner West.
Well, so, how is urbanizing going to become any worse when you hook up to a sewer and you have better drainage than with a septic? And from all my dealings with the hamlet of Beaver Creek, they are in for this.
No, they aren't.
Well, I was at the...
The recommendations from the TAC for this area is neither, it is neither rural reserve nor is it an urban reserve. That's the majority vote of the PAC on this property. You're quite wrong, they are not in favor of it.
But I believe it's the county's position.
I know it's the county's position, but she was talking about the people she, from Beaver Creek and her statement is not correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was one of those things from a county planning commissioner who happens to be maybe the chair or the vice chair of the, or hamlet of Beaver Creek and it was off the record.
Majority of the PAC says do not designate any urban reserve.
In that whole Beaver Creek giant area.
Any. They didn't say, you have other areas where they've talked about the flat areas and so forth? No, you do not designate any of it as urban reserve. There are other alternatives, designate as urban reserve the area north, northeast of Beaver Creek drainage system. That was a minority. Designate urban reserves in close in areas in the Highway 13 corridor excluding Parrot Creek. That was a minority position. I mean, all, there were many proposals that were put forward. The vote and the majority was do not designate any urban reserve. You may have people in the county planning saying one thing, but this is, this is the citizen comment.
Well, the county commissioners also thought that this area should come in and when we looked at the factors.
Yeah.
We thought it should come in. It actually, both the county staff and your staff thought that this area came out better in terms of factors.
Yeah, let me make this one comment in response to Commissioner West. You're talking, you've got to keep, you've got to keep it separated, the issue of sewer services versus stormwater services. Stormwater impacts are going to go to a different drainage system if we go there.
Well, they already are.
Yeah, well, that's right, but now we're urbanizing and now we're going to have the issues of, of course, bigger services.
Well, now we have new codes that deal more effectively with stormwater and a lot more conscientious about how we handle it.
I understand.
And by the time that gets urbanized or turns over, those codes will be in place. We're only making progress on stormwater management.
Commissioner Nacida.
Just want to share on the question of urbanization and stormwater. My background in the 1990s was as a watershed planner back in Michigan and watershed management at that time, especially from a group in Maryland called the Center for Watershed Protection, they actually had modeled, and there's peer-reviewed science on this, I mean, this high, there's a direct correlation between density and stream degradation. The more, the more dense you build, the worse the stream gets, it just gets, I mean, that's generally accepted. I don't think, though, that we're at the point yet in watershed management where... I don't think, though, that we're at the point yet in watershed management where all urbanization won't affect watersheds. So I think as a, as a, you know, a very good rule of thumb, I think Commissioner Neely is, is right on point that if we venture into a watershed that otherwise is, you know, relatively untouched at this point, it will be impacted. I mean, that's, that's, that's kind of, I mean, I think that's a pretty rock-solid assumption at this point. So I'm kind of interested in Commissioner Neely's issue about, you know, not going into new watershed, because the best way to protect water quality is just not to urbanize it.
It's already pretty, I mean, there was not too much more built out in that area, actually, when you guys studied it, Wes, there.
Yeah, but you're going to, you're going to, you're going to bring it in, and then density can increase. Those properties can be partial, so the density is going to increase. It's not going to stay, if you bring it in, it's not going to stay on those, on those lot sizes.
I guess this is, wherever you expand urban development, you have this issue. So it is, I mean, is that the statement, that no expansion anywhere if it's in a watershed? I mean, there's other, there's other factors to consider. And the reason this area came out high is because it doesn't have a lot of sensitive areas on the metro-sensitive area map. It came out really well in terms of that. So there's other factors, other than going into a new watershed.
I understand that.
And there's the whole transportation issue.
I'll also indicate that I did not vote with the majority on this particular issue, but, in terms of the PAC, but I feel that we, we need to concentrate our development on watersheds that we have already impacted.
Okay. I think I'll cut the conversation off here, but I want to kind of review. So we are in general agreement on Area 6, to take the Holcomb, actually, Road, no, it's not Holcomb, is it?
Forsyth.
No, no, not Forsyth.
What?
It's just the little sliver, the lower section that, yeah, it's the, it's not, not aligned on this, this is the map that has our recommendation on it, actually, is it? But anyway, that one.
Are you talking about Area 6?
Six, yeah.
Okay, tell me, I mean-
Yeah, it's just, it's the lower, it's this, it's this lower part of Area 6.
Keep, to keep.
To keep. So, that's not an area of disagreement, I believe.
No, that's within the Abernathy Creek watershed.
Right, okay. Area 5, is it?
So we're, the lower part of 6 is urban?
Yeah, that, just like we-
From Forsyth.
Like we did before.
Well, the, may I, may I pose a question?
Yes.
Is this area the area that, that was presented by the county?
No.
Area 5 and 6 were recommended for urban by the county.
Okay, now, my question is that, it appears, it's hard to tell, does this area, it looks like this area extends all the way up and through Bradley Road, is that correct?
No.
It does not?
It doesn't go out that far.
Okay, okay.
No, and, and this isn't drawn, the other, the next map you have needs to have that drawn.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so that, that's not a change.
Because we, we, this was all one area on the county map.
Yes.
And we drew, we broke Area 5 and 6 based on the northern property line of the city.
Okay. So we're not recommending any of Area 6?
I thought that was the last recommendation.
Okay, so it's Area 5, okay, that's the lower section, I, okay, it's just confusing.
Could you draw me out, Holcomb Road, please?
Yeah, Holcomb Road is down the middle, yeah, right there.
Okay.
So that's an extension.
Here's our northern city property line, boundary line, and I thought we had the discussion of splitting this right at that northern property line.
Okay, okay, that, yeah, and that's, makes perfect sense. When you drive it, you see that that's more urban, urbanized than that other area, and I'd like that to remain rural very much. Okay, so 5, I don't think we have disagreement on. Area 4, we don't have disagreement on, is that correct?
That's correct.
No, can't be.
Okay, Area 3, we do. So we'll have spent some time on the next meeting on that. And Area 2.
May I, may I make a, make a comment here?
Yes, of course.
I do want to emphasize the PAC's recommendation that we do include the flat areas along Holly Lane, so 3, you know, it wasn't an issue on my part that we kick out all of Area 3, I want to make that clear.
Right, that, okay, right, so we don't, we don't yet agree on that configuration. Area 2, appears we have some disagreement on. Area 1, we're fine, and Area 7 still is under consideration in the Kanema area.
Okay.
Is that true?
Yes, and Area 8 is out.
We're set.
And what, Area 8 is out, yeah.
So we'll take 6 and 8 off?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll address this next Tuesday at 7:00, and that's a decision point. Commissioner Nocita.
Tony and Dan, I think what I'd like to do is extend my request for the topo lines to all the areas. That should be, click at the same button.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thanks.
And then the lot map, too, I think is really great to see, because then you can see the areas of urbanization on it.
And I want to say that I, we've got a wonderful staff here in terms of producing maps. When we were at the Policy Advisory Committee, we kept on asking maps from the county, and I think they were unable to do them, you know, I really do think so. And I just want to compliment our, our staff in terms of their ability to produce these maps for discussion. We're, I think we're in a far stronger position than the four policy advisory committees the county commissioners.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, kudos on that.
Okay, thank you very much, and that will really be helpful, have those maps. Thank you. Next, let's move on to the reappointment of our municipal judge, Lorraine McNeese. We met in executive session as, per our charter, because the city council hires, and the municipal judge, so we did her performance evaluation, it was positive. And before us, we have her new contract, which is a two-year contract. We, it includes a 3% COLA for each of the two years. But the other agreement that we made together was that we would grant the municipal judge, that the city would pay the pro temp judges up to a ceiling of $2,000 for five days. So it is our request that the city manager, that we create a memo or a resolution so that we can remember that during budgeting, but it's for the second fiscal year, it's for the next fiscal year. So that will be an item we need to discuss with the budget committee. But that is our intent to do so.
What you're saying, because I had Mark it here, and I know you and I had some discussion about it, we're talking about, well, it is now number 6, the, is going to be altered probably in the next contract, next budget year. This is the one that has the judge at the judge's own expense, making arrangements, perform the duties, and so we're looking to have a certain amount committed to the pro temps, it does not come out of-
A ceiling, right.
Did I understand you correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, so that it would be paid for, through the city, rather than from the judge's own salary.
Right.
Is there a question?
No, and that's what they have. You have the revised contract, right?
Uh, we, not-
I don't know.
Not in front of us, I don't.
Is it?
It was emailed, yeah, but-
I can get you, I'll be honest.
And that's, that's the one, the change is in the compensation, that's in Section 5, and that monthly rate should read 2,765.
That's what we have.
That's what we have.
No.
That's not the correct, I don't think that's the correct one.
The amended was over 3,000.
Yeah.
I believe, I have the old one that I gave him.
Yes, yeah, no. We, we need-
We're still trying to get that figure.
We need to have the correct one.
I'll get you that figure in just one.
Okay, great.
So the compensation piece is the only thing that was amended?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we, should we do that, move on?
I got it right here.
Okay, she's got it.
The monthly rate is $3,021.
Okay, now may I have a motion?
I move that we reappoint the Honorable Lane McNeese as city municipal judge, under the contract that we have presented to us in this packet, with the amendment that the compensation read $3,021 instead of $2,765.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner West. A question? Commissioner Nocita?
Yeah, you did have a question on how the pro temp judge compensation is going to be handled, as far as it being in writing.
I asked the city manager to provide us a memo on that.
Yep.
Okay.
As you go through the next budget.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So it's something you'll have to take up, and you'll make a budgetary decision.
So, yes, so, we want to make sure that it's flagged.
We will, we will do a memo, so you can show that what your intent is, but again, it's a decision you'll have to make during the budget process.
Right, and I asked the judge to make sure she flagged that as well.
Well, the question then becomes if, if the services are needed before the next budget process.
She, she asked for it for the next fiscal year. She's not asking for it to July 1.
The services are there today. The way that works today is that if there is a judge pro temp, actually, the mayor, the, the judge pays that from her salary, and she's asking that that be moved over and paid for by the city.
In the next fiscal year.
And the reason that's done that way, because she's not serving, so the dollars that are going for the judge goes to the mayor pro temp.
But she's not requesting it in this contract.
No.
Right.
So this will start, her 3,000 will start as of July 1, 2,000?
No. No, it's starting, it will start-
Starting now.
It's retro.
July 1, or August 1?
August 1. Start with what the contract, that will start now. The separation of paying judge pro temp will be a budgetary decision that you will make next year, that would, then she would not be compensating the judge pro temp, the city will be budgeting that within the-
Okay, so, yeah, the contract's now, but the pro temp, okay.
Yeah, it'd be two separate actions. Any further comments or questions? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next is the last item of general business, authorization to utilize a short list of pre-qualified civil engineering firms to complete surface water management and water resource professional services on an as-needed basis for a period of five years, beginning October 7, 2009. And we have John Lewis here to walk us through this.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and city commissioners. So, yes, today, we're asking you to authorize the city manager to utilize a short list of four civil engineering firms to complete the surface water management and water resource engineering work as we see a need for. We're actually talking about a three-year, a minimum three-year period with the option of an extra fourth and an extra fifth year. So this is something we've worked on for several months now, soliciting statements of qualification. We've got a history of successfully completing a lot of these kinds of projects, and we've been successful because we've been able to utilize consultants. We, we know that we couldn't get the work done without these kinds of consultants, and we probably couldn't get the work done without the shortlist, because, to be quite honest, they, they make the process a little more efficient to be able to select consultants. So we're, we're happy that the agencies and consultant community, and I guess the state of Oregon, I'm not really sure how they come upon their rules, but they've created rules that allow us to make this kind of a decision, and so, or make this kind of a shortlist. So the, the shortlist results in efficiencies to Oregon City, so that we're able to complete a long list of projects without having to go through the challenging and time-consuming effort we've, we've completed for this particular decision, so that we don't have to do that for every project. So this action will keep the city aligned with state contracting and purchasing rules. As part of that effort, we created a very thorough RFQ, including requests for five distinct work categories. Tonight, one of those distinct categories is what we're, what we're asking you to authorize. There's other, there's, there's four other categories that are listed in the, in the commission report. We advertised this RFQ in the Daily Journal of Commerce, we actually collected 41 proposals, or statements qualifications from, from 41 firms, 10 of which were for this particular work category. We established five different selection committees, one of which was used for, for this piece of the work. And we evaluated all the firms using several criteria, including firm qualifications, the staff qualifications within those firms, or within their sub-consultant firms. We looked at client services, we looked at cost schedules, and we looked at long-term client relationships. So we've received SOQs from 10 qualified firms, and from those firms, we've selected that we believe the most qualified firms to meet our surface water management and water resource engineering needs. These firms include Brown &amp; Caldwell, Kennedy Janks, Consultants, Inc., O-Tech, Inc., and Greenworks. The evaluation scores are in your packets, along with the RFQ. The RFQ also included two addendums, and the RFQ attachments. So that's the end of what I had intended to say. I guess the other little thing I noticed as I was re-reviewing the commission report, I keep referring to these as proposals, and they're statements qualifications, they're really not proposals. We get the proposals when we define the scope of work, so there's three locations where that's, I don't know that that matters much, but.
You defined it for us, so that's good. May I have a motion, or are there questions? Commissioner Nocita?
I have questions. John, on page 3, there's a chart there, and I'm having, I was having a little bit of trouble interpreting, and I'm, there's this lineup at the top on this chart where it says max score, and in the three cells next to that, it's been whited out, which I assume were headings for what the numbers are below, and I'm, I'm just a bit in a mystery here.
Those are, those are the names of the people who evaluated-
The evaluators.
Right, and since we listed that online, we didn't want to, we didn't want to include that information.
Okay. So this is how the individual evaluators tallied up each individual firm, given a criteria?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
And you could find those criteria on page 23 or 26 of the RFQ lays out what the total, what, what criteria the evaluators were looking at.
So, based, John, don't go away. Oh.
Grabbing his phone.
I figured I better grab this, in case you're going to dig deeper there.
Now, on page 1, where you have the four preferred firms, Brown &amp; Caldwell scored kind of head and shoulders higher than the other firms, would, would that mean that they would be called for each job, and only when they can't do it? Would you go down the list to the next highest? Or would it be based on who's the next, you know, who's, would you, would you take these four and go with the least expensive one for each job, just to save the city money? I mean, given, are the scores, once you've chosen the four, four, do the scores matter anymore?
Yeah.
When you, when you give a contract, do the scores matter anymore, or among these four firms, would you parcel out the job based on who, who costs the less, least?
Well, in many locations, that would be true. We would want to award the project based on least, least cost. But this is a rotating list, depending on the size of the project, we may or may not ask for multiple proposals, we may use them more kind of on a rotational basis. But there's a fair amount of work, which Brown &amp; Caldwell in particular, would be well-suited to do, and that mainly pertains to our National, NPDS permit, it's an MS4 permit, and, and Brown &amp; Caldwell scored fairly high because they put together a team of staff from a couple of firms that have done a lot of work for us in the past, and they're very familiar with our permit, and they're very familiar with our reporting requirements, they, they working, they're working with Clackamas County and all the other co-permittees on that NPDS permit. And to be honest, this, this category is fairly heavily weighted with that kind of work. So Brown &amp; Caldwell presented very well in their, in their proposal. So on those kinds of projects, for one, I think they will be most qualified and probably most competitive.
Can you give us any, some examples of these projects?
So- I assume since I have my opposing counsel here on this, on this appeal, I can- I assume since I have my opposing counsel here on this, on this appeal, I can, I can ask this publicly.
Sure. This, this is not about what, what's actually at issue in the NPDS as much as how the city's gonna, you know, deal with-
Yeah, so I'd be interested to know what one of your, some of your, you know, MS4 projects that Brown &amp; Caldwell and these others would work on, would just give us the nature of them.
Well, one of them is, we're in the, in the negotiating process for permit renewal right now for our NPDS permit, and that involves all of the Clackamas County co-permittees, so there's a variety of those. And so, Brown &amp; Caldwell would definitely participate in that component of the work. There's also sampling programs that go on with that. They call hydro modification, which is analysis of some of our streams. There's projects there that DQ would like to see cities like ours pursue. Possibly master planning, we haven't done a lot of master planning for our stormwater utility, and Brown &amp; Caldwell may, I, I think there's other firms on this list that would probably fit into that category as well. But, yeah, it's, I think the things related to the NPDS permit, in my opinion, Brown &amp; Caldwell is gonna be very well-suited to do.
Okay. For the comment or a motion? Please.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to utilize a short list of pre-qualified civil engineering firms to complete necessary surface water management and water resource professional services on an as-needed basis for a period of three years, with an option to add two one-year periods, beginning October 7th, 2009.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment? Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, John. Next, we have the consent agenda. So, I'd like a motion for all items minus item D.
Move approval minus D.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Neely, on the consent agenda.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, I thought you said second.
Second!
He did. See, I'm clairvoyant. Nancy, the vote please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now, we have item D, the minutes of July 15. Commissioner Nocita?
Okay. I just wanted some wording worked into page six, paragraph two. And I've, I've blue lined some alternative language I'd like to propose. The current wording says, "Commissioner Nocita reported he spoke at a veterans' function last week. As a follow-up of this function, he proposed a work session to discuss how the city can be sensitive to the cultural history here in Oregon City and how it might relate to future code revisions." The function I had attended was actually the Veterans' Powwow at the Grand Ron Reservation. So, the comment really related to Native American culture, which isn't reflected in the minutes. So, here's the alternative language I'd like to propose. "Commissioner Nocita reported he spoke at the Veterans' Powwow at the Grand Ron Reservation last week. As a follow-up of this function, he proposed a future work session to discuss how the city can be sensitive to Native American cultural history here in Oregon City in future code revisions."
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Nocita, uh, excuse me, by Commissioner Smith. Sorry, I was thinking about the wording. My mind left. With those revisions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor, uh, it, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor, just, this is fine, because this is a minor change, but as a matter of form, actually, if there's a question about that, we need to check the tape and make sure that we capture what was actually said.
That's correct, yeah. Okay, thank you. That completes our business agenda. So, moving to communications and beginning with our city manager, Mr. Patterson?
Madam Mayor, I've got three items, and I'm gonna start going back to an earlier item at the agenda, and I don't mean to raise controversy, but I need to get some direction from you. And I'm gonna go back to the criticism that Mr. Edgar brought forth earlier today, because this, with a side discussion I had him at the break, I did find out what meeting we're talking about. So, I'd like to clarify this subject, because, and kind of going back and racking my brain about where we could conjure up that I committed Oregon City to $75,000. The discussion came up in regards to, and this was at the last wastewater advisory committee, came up in regards to the study for Killoff, and there, it went on for several minutes about discussions of who pays and whatever. And again, there's no cost associated with this as of yet, because it's not totally scoped. So, after the committee kind of was groping for some direction, I suggested that we put on the table for discussion a 75-25 split between CCSD and Tri-City, of which immediately got a reaction from the folks north of the river, because, which was an interesting discussion, because it really kind of talks about where this whole thing is at, because they came back to an issue, well, we're all in this together, we should all pay equally. Neely say, my colleagues from Tri-City, then we got into the discussion, well, what is the benefits of any of this for Tri-City? And after some debate which was going nowhere, then the discussion came up from Mike Kinsey, as I indicated to you earlier, that they actually had monies in the budget, and this was where it's coming from. Again, Mr. Edgar, at our break, indicated he was not at that meeting, so he gets this information second-handed, and of course, presents it as fact here this evening, which is not the first time we've seen this type of erroneous information being presented. But, I guess my concern is, and that was done on my part, is a way to get a discussion on the table, knowing, you know, kind of feeling where this thing was gonna go and how we might arrive at that. But, I cannot serve this commission if this is what we're gonna run into every time we have a committee mem, uh, meeting in trying to move groups to try to get some decisions. So, I guess I need to know what my leeway here, and if it is that things like that are gonna continually come under criticism and I can't do that, then you probably need somebody else to serve on that committee. If I have the leeway to try to engage that committee in a discussion as appropriate to get to a decision, then I can continue to do that, because again, it is an advisory committee, there was no commitment in that discussion, so. But I just, I need to know what you want me to, how you want me to perform, because this definitely does not serve the city when folks can come up and make statements like were made here this evening and present no facts in this matter. And, I mean, that's, that's the gist of that discussion. I don't have it verbatim, but that's where we're coming from on that thing.
If I may.
Commissioner Neely?
As, as you mentioned, we-
And, and there's been other cases, it's not always involved just Mr. Edgar, where things are stated and they're not necessarily accurate, and I don't know how, we could say every time that occurs, it's a committee you can't serve on. That doesn't make any sense. I mean, there's no, there's no way that we're going to, how do I say it, prevent people from making public comment and saying almost anything they want to. It, it becomes an issue if the commission reacts to that as a statement of fact as opposed to opinion, and then restricts you in some fashion. I, I, I would, I would say that it would not be a basis of removing you or, or accepting a request from you to be removed from a committee, just because some citizen comes up and makes a statement. And so, I, uh-
As long as you feel comfortable the way I'm moving on.
Absolutely.
You have my support.
Absolutely. And, and I guess I would just urge all citizens to make sure they check their facts, because it doesn't serve the city well at all to promote erroneous information. So, appreciate you clearing that up, and-
Yeah, and one other item, and again, this was presented to you in the executive session. I only do this because there was some statements made in regards, from previous meeting, in regards to Ms. Finnegan and the harassment case, and I think all of you probably were, Ms. Finnegan is, is very ill and has been fighting, uh, form of cancer for quite some time, and she probably doesn't want me mentioning that, because she's, keeps that pretty quietly. So, anyhow, as this issue moves forward, what she did, wanted to settle that so she could move on with other issues, there was a, an agreement to settle, that was defined. There was never a finding of, of guilt or wrongdoing in that case, and that was also misstated, so I need to clarify that.
Another piece of erroneous information.
Moving on to a couple of other things you need to know about is, next week, we are going to have flu shots available for staff, and if the commission would like to get those, and again, this is just regular flu, we could add you to that list. That's gonna be here in the commission chambers, and Jim, what day?
That's correct. We have, we have flu shots scheduled here in the commission on next Wednesday from 10 to 2, and, or if you can't make that one, we have a, that's, that's what, with the alignment falls occupational health coming in here to give shots, I wouldn't consider it a stipend, maybe a stick-in, for, sorry.
Are you trying to needleless?
Yeah, the other day, we got a southeast point of comments. The other day, it's available, we, we have an after-hours clinic that we're gonna hold down at the Carnegie from 4 to 8. Again, depending on, on numbers of folks available or, or signing up, we may end it earlier than that, but we have a pharmacist coming from one of the large chains here in the area to give shots. So, either of those days, if you want to-
The latter's available to whom?
Okay, um, next, next Wednesday-
October 14.
Uh, the 14th here in the, in the commission chambers from 10 to 2, and next Thursday from 4 to 8 in the Carnegie.
And this is open to the public?
No, no, actually, no, this is employees and their, their dependents. On Wednesday, they have to be 18 and older. I'm still clarifying with the pharmacist on whether they can give 15-year-olds shots or not. And it's only shots, it's not the nasal vaccine.
On Wednesday, they don't have to be 18 and older, the other days, it's okay?
Well, we'll see, we'll see, we're trying.
Not H1N1?
No, it's not the H1N1, they, they don't have that yet.
We're actually looking at a date to do that as well, if, again, if vaccine is available.
Really nice.
A question, will the senior center be offering flu shots, do you know?
I believe that Ms. Wiseman is trying to put something together for seniors as well.
Let, let us know at a, at a public meeting when, when that occurs.
Yeah, and I'm sure they'll do that for flu shots. Again, with the swine flu vaccine, there's a priority order, I didn't set the priorities, and again, vaccine appears to be somewhat limited right now, but we'll be working on that. Uh, I have two quick staff reports I'm gonna call on. Mr. Wiseman first, we have a request from Mr. Kleinman in regards to a conflict, which I don't think is an issue, but want to make you aware of that, so.
This actually relates to something you heard earlier today. If, if, as you may recall, Mr. Kleinman is an attorney who represents the city. We, we had a conflict in representing the city when Linda Lord and Glenda Durham sued the city, and Mr. Kleinman represents the city in the Danemaw. There's not much happening out there, but he still does represent the city. He's been contacted by a property owner in the concept plan area, and in particular, Mr. Gentman, who was here earlier, and asked if the city would be willing to waive a conflict to allow him to represent Mr. Gentman as he works his way through the metro process and any process at the city on this. There's not much of a, a relationship between the two, but before he can represent him, he wants to make sure that this, the city doesn't have an issue with, with that.
What would, what would the issue be, other than these references, and it's not two different things?
There's, there's really not much of an issue, but if he represents the city in one setting, before he can represent the city in another, represent somebody adverse to the city in, in another setting, he needs a, a waiver from the city of any potential conflict, that he's, he can't, um, you know, and I, I just don't see a real conflict, because-
Is there anything in his history that you know we need to be concerned with?
No, I don't think you have any reason to be concerned. I don't see an issue, but it's the client who has a dividend waiver.
I don't need to stay any concerned, so.
And then the final thing I'd like to mention is, call on Mr. Archer. He just came back from Parks Conference, and there were several significant awards that our department received, so I'll let him share that news with you.
You brought home the gold, huh?
Pardon?
You brought home the gold?
Yes. We did the medal count like the Olympic guard department against the other, and we won.
Yay.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I, I attended, along with some of our department staff, I attended the annual Oregon Recreation and Parks Association Conference, and this is an annual conference for Parks and Recreation Professionals around the state. And we, we did have some, we did receive some significant, significant recognition at that conference, and actually received four awards, some individual and some departmental. The, the first of those, these are in no particular order, was the Aquatic Facility Maintenance and Operations Award, and that was specific to Ann Crandall, our facility maintenance specialist, for recognition to outstanding aquatic facility staff for maintenance and operations, including innovation, training programs for staff, implementation of new technology, and energy efficiency. And that's probably, a lot of that is related to a number of the improvements that I think you're well aware of that we've made over the last couple of years at the, at our swimming pool, so that was, that was very nice. Also, related to our swimming pool, we received a lifesaving award in recognition for a rescue made by our pool staff on April 25th involving a potential life-threatening sit, excuse me, involving a potential life-threatening situation, and our staff did a great job of dealing with that rescue. Our aquatic and recreation supervisor, Rochelle Parsh, received the statewide New Professional Award for all Parks and Recreation staff. This is a recognition for professionals in our, in our field of less than 15 years, and that's a, that's one of the highest awards that's given out every year by this association of Parks and Recreation Professionals. And then finally, we received a, the Outstanding Design Award for Parks for our John Storm Park Project, and this is for excellence in new park design, and really was related to the, the kind of innovative design, their use of, use of the available land and kind of, and doing some creative things, and our overlook and putting the parking under the 205 bridge and not using, you know, other valuable real estate, and want to recognize again, our, our landscape architect for, for that project was Kurt Lango of Lango Hansen Landscape Architects. But, the, that, that award really is, is also due in support, due in part to the support of our commission for, for, for that project, and so, I actually want to present that award to the city commission, to the mayor and the city commissions.
Well, that's yours for the Parks and Rec Department.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Um, I think that probably we have lots of reports this evening. Commissioner West?
Well, thank you. I'll just, I'll try to, how many, well, we've been in four hours tonight, that's not too bad. I'll, I'll be brief. I, since the mayor has been gone the last couple of weeks, I've been at a lot of meetings and activities. The first one I'd like to talk about is the C4 Retreat, and Mayor Norris had asked me what was on the agenda. Well, the focus of the retreat really is a team-building thing, to have all our special districts and cities kind of working on the same page. So, it was not a heavy agenda, other than trying to define what our future communities would look like, to see if we could kind of come to some kind of consensus on factors and needs and, you know, how we can all work together. The, one thing of substance, another thing of substance that was on the agenda was the, or the discussion over the C4's definition as to what they are as a group. So, it's Clackamas County Coordinating Committee right now for the cities, and Sydney's to coordinate their efforts around transportation and-
Land use.
Land use with metro. And the discussion is that the hamlets and the CPOs inside and outside the urban growth boundary would like to have, be part of that group, and same with, well, the hamlets and villages are in there now. So, there was discussion over that. So, what is the focus of the group? Is it really to work with the cities, or are we gonna change the core mission of the group and include the CPOs? So, that decision, no retreats were made, or no retreats, no decisions were made. We spent, oh, gosh, a half-day talking about all kinds of issues on both sides of the fence, why to, why not to, so to be decided later. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the League of Oregon Cities Conference, which was, I think, very successful, I'm really glad I went. I put together two sessions that were, two breakout sessions on the, at the conference, and one of them was on our Main Street program, and energy savings from older buildings, and also how urban renewal can be used as a tool. And that session, oh, to our surprise, on a Saturday morning, was packed. We had over, about 200 people at it, and Lloyd Purdy did a great job speaking, and I even helped answer questions with Lloyd, so it was kind of fun. and I even helped answer questions with Lloyd. So it was kind of fun. I'm very glad that you asked me to take the vote for the city, because I would never have gone to that 8:00 breakfast. And I am so glad I went, because it was like the legislative year in review. And I really enjoyed that. As we've gone through all these things, they come up, and then how they've all settled, because sometimes I don't hear it. Well, there's a million, million items. So Dave Hunt spoke. He did a nice job. It looks like Shane Bemis is the new president of the board? Is that what you, for the league? So I don't know if anybody knows Shane. Young guy, young mayor of Gresham, lots of energy. I'm glad it's him, not me. Busy thing, busy, big job. And I also signed up to go on a tour of Gresham's wastewater treatment. So that was kind of interesting, getting a little, being, as we're going through iterations here at Tri-Cities. So I didn't know Commissioner Nacita, did you go on a tour?
No, I didn't.
Just didn't know if you did. And then Main Street had a conference, the state Main Street Conference was held over at Merrill Hurst, and I attended that. There's also more information. And then the only other thing I'm going to add on Main Street and our program is that our webs, look forward to our website and blog being, how do I say, debuted here shortly. Huh?
Up.
Oh, it's up. Okay. Well, it's not our official up yet. It's not quite perfect to where we want it. So look for that coming up. And that's kind of fun, because the blog has, it's not interactive, but it's current news events that are happening downtown. And I had a question for my fellow counselors and Mr. Kabeizman. I got a phone call from Trel Anderson from the Clackamas County Housing Authority. And they are redoing, at this point, Clackamas Heights, which is the lower development, now I keep thinking it's upper Park Place, but the lower development. And they are looking for County Commissioner Anne Leininger and myself to sit on some sort of panel advisory board as they decide what this development will look like and that kind of thing. So I'm, I'm concerned, though, if it's a conflict of interest for a land use decision that might come before us as the project moves forward to be built. So.
So your, your concern is that if, in fact, you serve on this board that advises them as to how to build very, how to develop this thing, it may eventually come before the city commission, and you would have to make a decision, yea or nay, whether it meets the criteria?
Yes.
The, it's, it's a little bit difficult to answer right now. The question, the three things you have to worry about as a quasi-judicial officer are ex parte contacts, bias, and, and conflicts of interest. Conflict of interest really only arise under Oregon law when you have a financial stake in, in the matter. My guess is that this is a voluntary board that you're not going to be paid for.
Yeah, no, no.
So...
I don't want a unit.
Yeah. So I, I think the conflict of interest isn't an issue. Bias, you know, I would assume that, you know, to the extent you give advice, that you probably have an expectation of how you're, how you're, you know, what you think is right. And that's a question you're going to have to make is, you know, can you separate that, that I really like the design, but it doesn't meet criteria 1750, 060B?
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that's something, as you get deeper into it, you can have, you can answer. The, the bigger question is really ex parte contacts and the information that you acquire as this goes forward. But again, it's not necessarily information, like, for example, if you have a lot of information about how the funding is going to occur, that doesn't come into ex parte context, because it's got to be information about something that affects a criteria, you know, that your decision. So again, that's going to have to wait and develop how, how that happens. Even if you do have ex parte context, that doesn't disqualify you from sitting as a decision-maker. It just means you have to disclose the information that you get.
I disclose it, yeah.
And have the ability for other people to rebut it. But again, it'd have to be a relevant issue, and that is the, you know, whether it meets certain criteria. So I think the answer is probably not, but you'll have to revisit it again if, in fact, an appeal comes before the, the commission.
Well, one of the reasons I would like to be part of this process is, you know, after putting on this certifiably green session, we, at the conference, we learned all about, well, LEED was, we've all known about LEED, but they have this Earth Advantage Program. And it also was part of our June Berry Lane. And it's a really a neat, neat standard. And I'd like to, you know, Oregon City, we'd like us to get something good out of the project. I'd like it to be an award-winning project. And, but...
It, it doesn't necessarily disqualify you. The thing you're going to have to worry about is, are the biases, are you so jazzed about the project?
Yeah.
That you can't look at the criteria and next party contacts? And that depends, you know, if you're involved in some aspects of it, but not others, you may not have anything to worry about. And even if you do, then it's just a matter of disclosing that information.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Next, Commissioner Neely?
Well, I'm going to keep it relatively brief, but I, I sat in as the, what am I called?
IMPACT.
IMPACT, alternate. That's the word I was looking for. The IMPACT alternate in our mayor's absence. Given to us were two large binders of materials in terms of what IMPACT is going to be looking at over the remainder of the year. They're in the car. I wish I brought them, so I could show them up here. Among them, the transportation system plans that are being developed, urban renewal, excuse me, urban reserves, issues that are being put forward and so forth. And I had those two packs, but they also gave a, a CD. Apparently, some of the, most of the appendices were not included in these two volumes. We were told that one of the, I didn't check it, one of the appendices is about 700 pages long. So this is a voluminous piece of work that IMPACT has to look at. Many discussion points are things that many of the people wanted to be included. I wasn't in that great of a position to make comments on them, save one. And that was the, dealing with the urban renewal piece, asking them to look at areas that might be included in urban reserves that are not urbanizable. We're not, Newell Creek Canyon is not the only area that is being looked at in that regard. Areas are being looked at in, I think both, I think probably Maryland, Multnomah County, but maybe partially in Washington County, that Abut Forest Park, and how, how that is dealt with and so forth. So I think some of the discussions that we're having here, in fact, are areas that are of a broader regional interest. So you've got a lot of work to do. You always do, but you've got, you've got a lot more work to do.
Yes, thank you.
I, I hope, I hope you found your, your, your marching up and down Machu Picchu terraces or whatever it is they have up there.
Prepares me to absorb more information.
Well, no, it was relaxing.
Oh, it was, yes.
[laughing]
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Just a couple of things. The first is, on Tuesday morning, I attended the Oregon City West Lynn Breakfast with Commissioner Nacita. And that's an annual tradition that the Optimist Club hosts in Oregon City at the Elks Club on the Tuesday before the big game. And so both football teams from Oregon City West Lynn and the Rowley, or I always say Rowley, but it's here now, sorry. So that was a fun event, as usual. And I think that the mayor was out, out of town just because she didn't want to go to that.
Yeah, because they've never won.
We've, we've lost, unfortunately, for the last six years. And so I was anticipating that there was going to be a bet, which there usually is.
Something like hanging the mayor by their heels over the park.
Yeah, did you ever do that?
Oh, yeah.
You don't remember? No, I don't remember that. But I know, I know that you made that bet. So anyway, I had to go. And I was thinking, okay, how, how am I going to do this? Because, you know, I'm a teacher at the high school. I, I have to, so, but we're playing in West Lynn. So, you know, this is not a good situation. This could be a risky bet. So anyway, I counted up all the numbers. And Jody Carson was there because, in place of Patty Galley. And so when the topic came up about a bet, I said, well, you know, really, regardless of whether we win or lose, we're still up by about nine. So I felt good about that. And so I think we saved, you know.
Good, thank you.
But I feel good. I think we're going to, we're going to win. Anyway, game tomorrow night, West Lynn High School, 7 o'clock. The other thing that I wanted to mention was I was attending the last three, what is called, community, community citizen gatherings that have, have been really a grassroots discussion about the interpretive center area, but not only that, broader in terms of the heritage discussion throughout Oregon City and beyond. And really, as a brainstorming time for anyone in the community that wants to, to share ideas and to get things on paper, just to start the discussion that we're all going to be facing right now, with what to do with this building, the interpretive center building, and just heritage in general in the city. You know, the, the, there's been three meetings now. The last one was last night. Lots of great ideas. And mainly, what I want to propose is, is just to make sure that if we get all these notes consolidated, which I think they pretty much are for those last three meetings, that that also be included in the discussion for our work session where we are talking about this topic. Because I think there's so many ideas out there. We've got a concept for a project possibly with the county. And, and I think there could be partnerships involved in that, or, or, there's just a lot of different viewpoints. So I, I hope that we discuss all of those. And then the other thing, could just, because this, this note, this memo here that was on our diocese tonight from the SIS Involvement Council, I was also at that meeting where there was a discussion about the interpretive center building. And again, economic development and broader heritage issues within the city. And the CIC voted to encourage the city to develop a visioning task force to help determine what Oregon City's heritage would be. And this was a few weeks ago. I can't remember how long ago the meeting was. But in that discussion, in that CIC discussion, I brought up the fact that this, this community gathering has been taking place, and that it wants to expand, and that the CIC should definitely be a partner in that and, and this discussion. The only reason I mention it, because last night at the meeting, the community gathering meeting, that word "task force" was really talked about quite a lot. And not, not because it came up at the CIC, but, but just in the general feeling throughout the community that as soon as any kind of task force or committee is created, it then shrinks the group and shrinks the discussion that we want to be fairly broad at this point. And so the community gathering last night was, the topic came up, well, is this group going to take on its own name? Is this group going to take on some more, you know, some more structural, you know, form? And it was pretty overwhelming that we didn't want that, that, that we wanted to continue it as a broad, open discussion where everyone was invited. And so to not minimize the amount of people that are involved and to not shrink it into any one committee or task force that would focus, have a narrow focus. So I just wanted to share that. The next meeting for that group is scheduled for November 3 at 6:30, community, at the Pioneer Community Center. And again, anybody that's welcome, or anybody that wants to go is welcome. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Nacita?
Okay, I have a couple of items here. First, I am the mayor's alternate to the Metro Reserves Committee. And we met recently, and I just wanted to give a quick report on that meeting. I was really pleased with it. I, there was some concern on a lot of people's part about a lot of urban reserves that are being discussed for Washington County. I shared with the mayor a comment that I made that I was corrected on, because in looking over the map of all the thing, all the growth that was in the offing for Washington County, I said, prefaced my remarks with the comment that I didn't have a dog in that fight over in Washington County. And Mary Kyle McCurdy of Thousand Friends corrected me by saying that, yes, you do have a dog in the fight, because all of the infrastructure that is going to be required for that area, you'll be on the hook for, you know, it's a regional question, and everybody in the region has to take that into consideration. And that was a good point. And I, I told her I was, stood corrected. Michael Jordan's report, both the written report and the report he gave during the meeting, I was appreciative of. Metro is proposing what they're calling a tight urban growth boundary with the idea that that would help the investment process within the existing urban growth boundary with, you know, to improve what we have as far as infrastructure and development within the existing growth boundary. And I'm very much on board with that. I even raised a question with a problem that I've seen with Oregon's land use system over the past couple of decades, which is when Senate Bill 100 was passed in 73, you know, over the past 30 years or so, the urban growth boundary has been really a forest, farmland and forest protection mechanism more than anything else. And Metro and the system hasn't really paid attention to how we grow within the urban growth boundary and, and managing that growth so that the quality of life doesn't diminish. I mean, there are some areas in the metropolitan area that I think are quite dismal, because the quality of the growth is not good. And I was pleased to learn and hear the discussion at this meeting about the, what's the term, making the greatest places?
And the performance standards.
And, and they're actually, Metro is building capacity for things like urban design and working to share that expertise with local communities. I can see the tight urban growth boundary. Dan, in the past, has mentioned, for example, I recall discussions about the North Main Street area, and how our land values really don't support towers, for example. And the more we sprawl outward, I think those land economics would persist. If we tighten up the urban growth boundary and the land value economics are such that these areas can become more valuable, because there is more demand within the growth boundary, I can see things happening, improving that kind of area. And for example, the 99th quarter, between Oregon City and Milwaukee is really desolate. Having that, you know, when MAX comes down and having, you know, the economics to create something like the North Interstate redevelopment with MAX would, I think, improve that area. So I'm, I'm, I'm really happy with where, where the, where the, the region's going with those processes, with the reserve processes. I'm, I'm just really, really pleased with it all. As an example of how urban design can be used to enhance the quality of life, I want to throw up a couple of the slides of the next thing I want to talk to you about. I had the honor and pleasure of participating on the trip to Vancouver organized by Robert Liberty of Metro, Metro Council of Liberty. He, he's done this for several years now with planners and elected officials in the metro region. I took a whole bunch of slides. I only have about seven here, because I don't want to take too much time. But I wanted, I wanted to pick out some things that really, really stood out. And I just want to share them with you, because I think there's some lessons and thinking outside of the box here. This was one of the shots I took in the former Carling Brewery redevelopment up in Vancouver. And it's an example of how there's a green strip, dense apartment condominium housing, and a really efficient use of space with a pocket park with a nice gazebo-type structure there. And then even the stormwater, you can see the little, the brick swale there on the right. How is, you know, density is really designed well. And it's, it's, you really... how, you know, density is really designed well, and you really have a good sense of place and well-being in a dense area. I mean, having something, I mean, the north end of Main Street in Oregon City is kind of desolate right now, but having development like that there with, you know, condominiums with views over the river, that would be, that would be pretty neat in my mind. Why don't we go to the next slide? They're right in that same neighborhood, I want to point to this house, I got three slides on this, because I thought this was really a neat thing to share in Oregon City. This is a unit, 30 dwelling units per acre. It's designed to look like something that was built in the early 19th century, or early 20th century or late 19th century, but it's new. The style is sympathetic to what's around it. And if you go to the next slide, here's another example of, you know, the gables and all the nice, you know, the porch and the features. But the next slide is the key. All of this is built underground parking. So they had, they made a really efficient use of space by putting underground parking below a building that fits in within, you know, the context of the older existing neighborhood. So adding density, you know, does not diminish, you know, the neighborhood. I thought that was really slick. Why don't we go to the next one? Talked about this with Commissioner Smith. They're doing things with density that you wouldn't think of. This Honda dealership actually goes beyond that apartment tower. And that apartment tower, essentially, they took a low-level automobile service garage and showroom and just stuck an apartment tower through the roof of it. And as far as mixed use, I mean, I would have never thought of that, but...
Were the apartments connected to that building?
It rises just like a, it rises right out of the middle of it.
So are there cars, like if it's not on the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can, you can like, you know, go to the first floor of the apartment building, walk out your door, and...
You're on the car lot?
You're in the car showroom, essentially.
Well, at least they're all new.
It's, I mean, I was, I would never think of something like that, but to have unusual and out-of-the-box ideas, almost literally in this case.
Super new lookout.
I thought that was just, you know, very interesting. And, let's see the next one. And here's the one, the killer one for me, that was just like the out-of-the-box idea, literally, big box. This is a Home Depot big box, you can see the red lettering of the Home Depot there above the entry, and they have condominiums built above the big box.
Nice.
That's a target. That's, so that was another way I thought, I mean, just thinking of any way to do mixed use. I don't know if I'd want something to look like that in Oregon City, but I mean, just the idea of, you know, creatively thinking ways to do mixed use, I think I got just one more. And that's the C bus. Between Vancouver and North Vancouver, there's, I think, two of these buses that run back and forth. It was like being in a sardine, you couldn't get out on a deck or anything to enjoy the outside, but just having water transportation be another form of mass transit, I thought that was really kind of nifty. And we did discuss on the trip, you know, I asked Robert and some of the other planners what has been considered for the Willamette River. And there have been some studies, and one of the things that was discussed was, one of the things that would be needed to do like a water ferry or taxi along the Willamette is more density right on the river. And so one of the issues that came up is that we have, we have the potential for that in Oregon City, just getting more residential density downtown. We have all the infrastructure in the cities on the water, same with Portland. Lake Oswego, not so much, but Lake Oswego has a development, I think called Foothills, that is planned to be quite dense. So in the future, that could, you know, also support something going up and down, up and down the Willamette. And then, you know, Milwaukee, you know, there's all that discussion about removing Kellogg to be able to redevelop the riverfront there. So it's something really intriguing to think about. So that's my little truncated report on Vancouver. Next item on my list is one, since Dan and Tony are here. One bad habit of being an attorney is you like to read legal notices. And I read, I read the legal notice for the Public Works Master Plan Appeal, and I have an issue with it, and I want to discuss it, since Bill's here. The legal notice in the Oregon City News mentions that the city commission has called up the project for review as well as the citizens' group. And it does also notice, mention in the text that we're not restricting ourselves to any particular issues, that we're kind of doing it, the ad doesn't say de novo, but we're really doing a de novo review. But, and I can understand why this was done, the notice mentions the specific text of appeals in our code, but in that text, because the text really doesn't account for the city commission calling up the appeal, which is a function of state law more than anything else, it does, the public notice, the legal notice in the newspaper gives the impression that people wanting to testify at the, at the public hearing on the appeal are going to be limited to the issues below. In other words, I think the notice gives the misimpression that people are restricted in giving new information, raising new issues. My intent, and I thought we were clear on this, was that we were doing our call up de novo, and people weren't limited to either the issues they could raise or the facts that they could put forth to the commission. And I, as a decision maker, want to have the benefit of a lot of views and a lot of information, even if it wasn't raised below. So I guess I got a question for both our planning staff and Bill as to what do we do about this, given the fact that the notice has already been published in the paper?
Yeah, and I guess we did talk about this, and you know, there hasn't been a call-up for, you know, if there was one, it was a while ago, and sort of how do we deal with the state law that allows the city commission to call this up, as well as our existing code that lays out, you know, in a typical appeal, you're limited to the issues that are identified in the notice of appeal, and it's on the record, no new evidence came in. And what we did was, because the commission is calling it up and didn't identify any particular issues, the thought was that all issues are on the table, you know, that there's no limitation on issues, it's basically everything in there, because there's nothing identified in the call-up. However, that didn't affect the requirement that it be on the record that the commission, that it was developed before the planning commission. There's no state law that requires it, so we followed the code that says that it's on the record, developed before the planning commission. Now, that was our reading of the code and the statute as to how to handle that. The commission, I believe, could decide that, no, it wants to hear new information. If it does that, there are implications from that, basically, to the extent any new evidence comes in at the hearing, people have the right to rebut that, and there may be, it may be that the decision gets extended further if in fact you're going to, if you're going to follow that. So, you know, it's really up to the commission, how do you want to handle your scope of review? I mean, as the code is written, and as we interpreted it, it was, issues are open, but the record is limited to what, the evidence is limited to what came in before the planning commission.
Commissioner Neely.
I've got a reaction too. And of course, I did not, I did not read the notice, but I think if we don't do it that way, what the potential is, is that there might be an assumption that we pull all these things up for review that particularly involve city properties and so forth, and that you may have citizens that say, well, I'm just going to bypass the planning commission completely on that, and I'm just going to take my issues directly to the city commission when it calls it up. If we have the capability ourselves of essentially waiving that notice requirement, if we feel that there's other information that we need based on what we're bringing up in discussion, I assume that's possible.
It's possible, you know, what, the limitation on evidence is essentially a procedural requirement, and as long as you allow people to rebut that evidence and that they know that they can in fact bring it, then any issues as to the code, you can cure, and so there's not a problem with doing that. But your code as written does say, you know, that appeal hearings, which is, which the commission is, the call-up is a subspecies of, are on the record, so, you know, it's...
Yeah, so I, I don't think I have a problem with it then, just to make sure that the planning commission is the initial vehicle by which people bring things forward, so as long as, as long as we have the flexibility there, I'm not that concerned about it personally.
I read, I read it too, I thought it was in legalese and I couldn't understand it. So I thought that it didn't restrict or...
Yeah, it's just the way it is.
That's what I thought.
Well, I think I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Neely's point. If we decide on review that if someone brings up an issue that hasn't been brought up below, and we decide we need additional facts...
We can do it.
...to evaluate that issue, we can ask for the information.
Okay. Does that conclude your report?
One last thing, I'll make this really brief, I attended the League of Oregon Cities also. I made some notes, and I just want to bring up two things, again, just on the, just the great ideas all over the place and meeting a lot of people and getting facts in these, in these seminars. We've been having discussions on design standards downtown, and I learned of what Sandy is doing, which was fascinating. They had, they had design standards which were actually code standards, and they've developed standards for something called the Sandy Style. They've taken their, gone back into history and just kind of determined what is traditionally and authentically Sandy as an architectural style, and they've actually embedded that in, not as a guideline, but as city code, which I thought was very interesting. And there was a sketch of a Jack-in-the-Box, and even a fast food outlet had to be designed pursuant to this Sandy Style, and the drawings at least looked really, really sharp. So I guess we can start reflecting on what's the Oregon City style. The other thing was, that really jumped out at me was, you know, one of the seminars on alternative financing for municipal government, and because of my interest in funding police services, one thing blew me away was, there was a discussion by a guy at Cannell Gates, who's a bond lawyer, I'm sure maybe Bill knows the guy.
Harvey Rogers, most likely.
Gray-haired guy.
Yeah, Harvey Rogers.
Yeah. And he was talking about this case called Knapp versus City of Jacksonville, which was a hybrid charge, a utility surcharge, where the City of Jacksonville actually used an assessment, if I'm reading this correctly, and I was looking at the case very, really briefly, they did a 15-month charge assessment on sewer and water systems in order to pay for police and fire protection. And the Supreme Court upheld that, and it got around the Measure 5 and Measure 50 limits. That's pretty interesting.
I'm familiar with the case, but not the specifics, and have to dig back into it, but certainly Harvey Rogers is, you know, the expert when you deal with public financing, so, you know, that's something the commission wants to do.
And the reason I, this came to mind, you know, because we've kind of gotten off the subject in some ways in my mind, you know, we had, I think, where did we get, chief, three or four officers under the cops grant? Two.
Two.
Okay, and we were applying for five, right? And I remember Commissioner Smith saying during the campaign that to have an adequate force in this city, we needed 10.
Yeah, as far as studies show this.
And so, just, you know, mind-bending on various different ways to finance police protection, and was quite interesting to me. So I'll be mulling that one over for some more.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Noceta, I heard that you are going to be making a presentation, I think it's the Government Affairs Committee of the Chamber?
Yeah, I'll mention that too. Tomorrow, I'll be going before the Government and Economic Affairs Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, mostly to get their expertise and advice to us, and I'll draft all of the comments into a memo and distribute to the commission and the city manager on the role that the economic development coordinator might play. And I'm looking forward to that.
All right, thank you. And the last and final report, really good news, I was talking with Congressman Schrader's office, and the Energy and Water Appropriation gave 900, the House passed $918,000 for the locks in addition to the $1.8 million stimulus. So the locks may be on the way. Well, that's pretty exciting. So that was Congressman Schrader's work. And also, secondly, he, his office is working on draft language now to authorize a feasibility study for the National Heritage Area. And that is the first step toward getting funding for the National Heritage Area. So I'm still looking for $10,000 a year for staff, because that will be really necessary to get that. And Senator Schrader's office will also be sponsoring a National Heritage Area 101, which will be for the two communities as well as other interested stakeholders to, so we get baseline information about what being a National Heritage Area means. National Park Service will come down from Seattle, we're already engaged with Tracy Fortman here, and state parks as well, so let's, look for that. Secondly, I've appointed an art committee, which will be working on public art for our new city hall, so we'll be working on that. One of the remaining projects for the 150th celebration was planting 150 trees, and we finally have that scheduled, thanks to Scott Archer and our Plaquemines Fire District firefighters are doing some of them, and is it?
Mountain View Community Church.
Mountain View, I'm sorry.
Mountain View Community Church.
Yes, thank you. Mountain View Community Church will be doing the other part, so I'm really excited about that happening in places that need trees in our community. And then the last thing is that I was really excited to be asked to be the grand marshal of the Oregon City High School Homecoming Parade again, and I'm very excited to do that. So look for me on October 16th, I'll be waving at you. Practicing my wave. If there's no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.